With the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has given adequate notice of this meeting by having published the date, time, and place of this meeting in the Home News Tribune and has posted the meeting at the middle school, 330 Wayne Street, Highland Park, New Jersey. Linda, can we rise for the pledge allegiance?
I...
...of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, free and just as a squirrel.
Linda, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Aversa?
Here.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Here.
I'm sorry, Ms. Bull?
Here.
Ms. Simorusti?
Here.
Ms. Gowan?
Here.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Here.
Mr. Roslowitz?
Here.
Ms. Sherber?
Here.
Mr. Sherman?
Here. Ms. Hopeless, there are communications for the board?
Yes. I provided the board with a list, just as a reminder of emails that were sent to the board since the last board meeting. In the future, I'll be attempting as comprehensively as possible to be including this on the agenda as a commemoration. We received an email from a resident congratulating the Highland Park High School Orchestra under the leadership of Ms. Feng. They competed successfully at Carnegie Hall this Saturday, the...
Actually, I think it was Lincoln Center this year.
And, I'm sorry, last year, I'm sorry, I'm reading it, I'm skimming. Yes, last year, they competed successfully at Carnegie Hall. This past Saturday, which was March 7th, I want to say, they performed beautifully on the stage of Lincoln Center as part of the National School Orchestra Finals. They won two awards, including the most original composition. So, I think congratulations are in order.
I have a motion to approve the March 9 regular and executive session meetings. Minutes, please.
A second.
Is there any discussion?
There was one little thing. The public comment, the second time around. There was a comment from Ms. Frydenreich that suggested that we not spend the $20,000 on the communications, whatever that was, plan. And that was not included, and I thought that was actually key to what she was saying.
Okay.
I'll include that she commented on that position in the budget. I don't usually, well, I can put "she commented" in opposition of that.
That's all I was asking.
Yeah, thank you.
That's fine. Okay. Any other comments? Linda, can we have a roll call, please?
One sec.
Yes.
Ms. Aversa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Abstain.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Mr. Roslowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. Mr. Soto, can we have the superintendent's report, please?
Yes, let's begin with the student update.
Okay, so, after a few delayed openings, for those grades who did not currently take, who are not currently taking the park exam, our discovery workshops returned. Currently, the workshops included things such as diversity in film, reading in crafts, knitting, 30 for 30, et cetera. Also, I know I reported on the NJ Science League ranks in the previous meeting. I have updates right now. So, FizzLeads is 31st in the state, ChemLeads is 10th in the state, and BioLeads is 6th in the state. And also, Robotics Club would like to thank Mrs. Marks. I know this isn't the board agenda, but we just want to thank Mrs. Marks for her willingness to take on the advisor position. And the Robotics Club's sea perch competition will be in April, will take place April 18 at Rowan University in New Jersey. Also, last week, as you know, Tuesday was St. Patrick's Day, and DECA Club, we had great success as a week-long fundraiser. The school store was open between periods as well as after school, and on St. Patrick's Day, our sales were $130, and we sold candy, goods, baked goods, and also Shamrock shakes, which are smoothies, you know, St. Patrick's themed. Also, the Middle School County Food Drive has ended, I think it's the March 13th ended, and collectively, the four grades in HP High School have raised 564 food items. The junior class has raised the most at 207 items. Also, thanks to the grant from HPEF, our Malle UN Congress Club has the opportunity to attend a Malle UN conference in Montreal, Canada. So, I think this might be the first one where we're going out of country, if I'm correct. So, also, last week, our senior video filming began, and we're currently filming interviews. We also have later segments that will be filmed. And I don't know if Ms. Liebowitz is here today, but she, at the last meeting, she asked us to report on things from the other schools. And so, we were, we asked Mr. Lassiter if we could be connected to those principals. And so, I have a couple of things to read. Irving's principal, Ms. Kelly, I don't know...
Ms. W.
Ms. W. There we go, there we go. So, Irving is taking a whole-school field trip to the State Theater on Wednesday, this Wednesday, to see Stella, Queen of the Snow. So, all the students are very excited. Donna Malouf, the principal of middle school, reports that there was a science ball competition. It was Saturday, 21st March, and there were 12 science bowlers, as we call them, who participated at the 7th Annual Middle School Science Ball Competition at St. Joseph High School. So, in this competition, a total of 120 students from various middle schools in NJ participated, and our middle school placed 3rd in the competition. So, that's amazing. And out of all the students, out of all the students, our very own Eric Chen, a Highland Park middle schooler, he took home the plaque for being the top scorer, and he won a cash prize of $100.
Wow.
So, we also, we tied 3rd place with Monroe Middle School. And the way it works is the top 5 students, their scores are counted as, well qualifies us. And the top 5 students were Eric Chen, Carrie Lee, Ben, Giacchione, I think, Dylan Tulock, and Thomas Lee. And she said, the principal, Ms. Malouf, says, "Congratulations to the winners. I applaud all the students who worked hard practicing every week, sometimes twice a week with enthusiasm to prepare for this competition." She says she's very proud of each and every one of them. So, I just want to thank Ms. Liebowitz for asking us to report, because I honestly think this is something I should have done before, because as well as great things happening in the high school, I think there's a lot of other great things in Irving, Middle, and Bartle School.
Okay, so, the senior class is always tasked with raising money from RUM, and we are getting close to our goal of 12,000. We're only $2,000 away. And to help with this, actually, the senior class will be holding a student versus staff prison ball tournament in the high school gym on April 22nd. So, you can come watch staff throw fuzzy balls at children for just $3. So, please come and support. The AP exam registration deadline has passed, that was March 20th. So, we see the AP classes starting to get really geared up for the exam. Don't forget to purchase your tickets for Beauty and the Beast, which is our high school drama's production. They're performing March 26th, March 27th, and 20th. I think they're also actually performing Sunday, the 29th. You can reserve your tickets at HPdrama.org, and the student price is $10. I think it might be 15? Yeah, 15, okay, for if you're not a student. The spring sports, they're still in their practicing phase, they haven't had any games or meets yet. Just a couple of things in progress. We have a tentative date for the spring soiree, which is set for April 24th. So, all students are encouraged to, all high school students are encouraged to go to that. And I think, so Autism Awareness Month is undergoing planning phase with Ms. Dewhurst, and I think we have a meeting with Student Congress either this week or next week about it. Last meeting, Vivek talked a little bit about the park, so this is just a follow-up. So, some of the students are worried and somewhat frustrated about the amount of class time they're losing, just now that it's been so many weeks, especially now, at this point in the year, students in AP classes. So, some of the students have mentioned that March, they didn't really feel like it was a productive academic month. So, our question is, what changes, if any, can be made to the testing in May so that class time is lost and the testing sessions are run more efficiently? That's it.
Can I make a comment to the students and to any of the other parents out there of seniors? I know a lot of people are hearing from colleges now. So, hopefully, you're hearing from colleges, and it's productive, and you're happy, and that your friends are also hearing from colleges, and it's productive and happy, as much as it can be.
Till we get the bill.
Huh?
Till we get the bill.
Until you get the bill, which will all be paid for, not to worry.
Okay, thank you. We'd like to share the enrollment for February. At Irving, there was a total enrollment of 322 students, 12 transferred in, 4 transferred out. Bartle, 460 students, 4 transferred in, 6 transferred out. The middle school, 334 students, 1 transferred in, 0 transferred out. And at the high school, 465 students, 1 transferred in, 3 transferred out, for a total of 1,574 students for the month of January. For the month of February, we have 1,581, which is an additional 7 students. The violence and vandalism report, we have 0 out-of-school suspensions, in-school suspensions, all violence and vandalism at Irving and Bartle. The middle school had 1 out-of-school suspension, high school had 5. The middle school had 3 in-school suspensions, the high school had 2, and for violence and vandalism, the middle school had 3, and the high school had 3. In addressing the number of days that has been dedicated for park testing, I did have a very interesting conversation with Ms. Lassiter, and he had this conversation with the staff, and they're trying their very best to reduce the amount of days from, I believe, from 12, they're trying to reduce it to 5. So, that's in the works already. So, I'm glad that we're able to share that good news. We've already presented 2 pretty comprehensive budget presentations to you. Today's presentation simply represents proposed adjustments to the previous budget presentation, and there was as follows. We're suggesting for next year, some proposed additional staffing. Linda?
And so, for Irving, we're proposing a guidance counselor, half-guidance counselor for the amount of $28,762. In the past, Irving has had a guidance counselor that provided social and emotional support to our students, both individually and throughout the school programs. This year is the first year without one, and in the absence, has been filled by the students, parents, and faculty. So, while the Interventional Referral Services Committee has worked diligently to get programs in place, there is no substitute for a person with a counseling background to work with our students and families. And so, we attempted to share the Bartle Guidance Counselor early in the year, but this particular Guidance Counselor often was very consumed by work at Bartle. It is important that we support the social and emotional well-being of our youngest students, and therefore, we're recommending a part-time Guidance Counselor to provide services to Irving students. That's pretty much a justification for the half-day Guidance Counselor. We're also proposing a media specialist. Currently, the media specialist is being shared. We have 2 media specialists, one's at Bartle, and the other one actually services both the high school and the middle school. Very difficult to have consistency coming to Irving, and so, we're proposing also a half-a-position for a media specialist for Irving to further their needs. We're also suggesting to further support Bartle is a school dean. So, we're looking at pretty much a half-a-position to really further support the administration and the teachers in addressing the growing disciplinary issues that is occurring, that are occurring at Bartle.
Can I ask a question?
Yes. Could we wait until the end of the presentation, please?
If that's okay with us.
Yeah, please.
Okay, and this concludes.
Oh, wait, no.
So, there's an additional.
Yeah.
So, if we consider all 3 positions, that's an additional $86,286 added to the budget. And if we look for the next slide, that's going to represent, so if we stay as-is, without the 3 additional positions, we're looking at an increase of taxes of 4.10%, and that addresses a shortfall of $486,820. With the additional positions that are being proposed, we would need to increase taxes for the additional staffing by 4.47%, which then addresses a shortfall of $573,106. Our next meeting, the formal budget hearing and adoption for the final budget, has been scheduled for April 20th.
Are there any questions from the board?
Yes, I have a question. The halftime dean position at Bartle, is that like the position that used to be there?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
You're welcome.
I have a question about the dean position. Would that be something that you would prefer, to find someone in-house that would know the district and the students? Because I know that, for me, Ms. Schmon was someone who was here for such a long time. She had known some of the parents of the students that she was serving, so she was a resource that, you know, was hard to replace.
Certainly, that's something to consider. Ms. Schmon had the position last year, and that would require additional conversation with the principal to make sure that I understand, and he understands, what are the needs and how to best proceed in meeting those needs. If it's Barbary, we need to look elsewhere, then that's what we'll pursue.
Okay, thank you.
If I'm not mistaken, that position was riffed, correct? I mean, so how does that work with basically replacing the functions of a position that was riffed?
Was it riffed?
Yeah.
That was one of the riff positions?
She would be entitled to it.
So, the last person in that position would be offered the position?
So, would we actually be calling it a dean, or would we be going back to, I believe it was, a student and staff support person?
Well, it really depends. I would have to really sit with the principal to see if it's just one particular position, or can that position be very similar to last year's, which would be half-dean, half, let's say, gym?
Right.
We might also want to look at what certification is that position. So, I don't know that a job description has been crafted, but that seems like it would be the first place to start.
That is correct. As a matter of fact, as we speak, we are writing and we're updating all of the job descriptions in the district.
Good.
Quick question about the halftime positions. Those are not with benefits, so that's the entire cost?
Correct, no benefits.
Okay, thank you.
And the meeting that you proposed on the 20th, that was the last slide, is that considered a regular board meeting? Is that an extra-budget town hall type?
So, there will be a budget hearing, an official budget hearing, which is mandated by the state to begin that meeting.
Yeah, it's part of the regular board meeting. Regular business will be conducted after the budget hearing takes place. Oh.
Just much like tonight, there will be opportunity, and actually mandated opportunity, to speak during, before we move on to regular board business.
Okay. Because I know that, I was hopeful that we would have something similar to what the parent community group in town had last year, where it was just a panel, it was maybe 2 board members, I don't remember, and then some parent representatives, and there was someone from the school board association, I can't remember.
Israel and I...
At the last meeting, we kind of struck a compromise, that instead of doing a meeting like that tonight, what we're going to do is have the budget presentation upfront, and then there'll be a public comment period that's just on the budget, so people don't have to sit through all the regular business.
Right.
And then Adam and Mr. Soto go to different groups throughout the community and do budget presentations.
I thought we were still going to talk about having a possible other meeting, if we felt there was desire.
And I think after tonight, I'm going to determine that there is no desire.
Yeah. I mean, I've talked to so many people who say they can't come on Monday nights, blah, 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 blah. I mean, do we want to try to offer something on another night?
It seems like I'm hearing the same, is that Monday nights consistently are bad for some people that have night jobs. Mondays, for some reason, are very busy with other board meetings, I would assume.
Maybe something like at the senior center with a couple of board members to answer questions. I mean, if nobody shows up, nobody shows up, you know?
Yeah.
Probably you should be one of those members.
Well, Mr. Soto and I were thinking about doing a Q&amp;A.
Oh, fantastic.
But that doesn't mean that no one else from this board can participate in something along that lines.
Okay.
I would be hard-pressed to put up a formal board meeting, just in the sense that there's a lot of work that goes in, no matter how much we do or don't do. But some informal setting is something that I think would be appropriate, and I think Mr. Soto and I, and everybody can figure out what that is, but announce it for, not passover, but before the next meeting.
So, that would be something coordinated by Mr. Soto, or would it be appropriate for board members to say, "Okay, I'm going to have office hours in the senior center", just to take your input?
I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, that sounds a little strange, but I'd be happy to do it.
I think, yeah, I think what we can do is kind of a Q&amp;A session.
Great.
I know what we've done in the past is the board president, and I've said before, go to the PTO meetings. That's been about the extent of the outreach. I'm amenable to setting up something specifically, a Q&amp;A at the senior center, or even at this building, probably at this building, because...
Yeah, right.
It's our building, but something that could be found on a agree-upon date where everybody would be invited.
Cool, that sounds great.
So, probably the 3rd week in April would be before the next meeting, but after Passover and the holidays.
Right, during that 2-day period or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I will communicate with the board via email, and we'll get a flyer out.
Fantastic, thank you.
Great.
Yep. Okay. All right, we're good. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Please feel free to state your name and make any comments deemed necessary.
On the budget.
Sorry, yes, regarding the budget and the budget alone, for the first public comment. Any public comment? Seeing as, oh, yep.
I'm Frydenreich, 62 Grant Avenue. I'm very disappointed with this revised budget presentation. We are clearly heading in the wrong direction. At the end of last meeting, we were talking about a 3.9% increase, and now you want to go up to 4.38. That's really not acceptable. You did make very clear arguments for why you want to have these additional staffing positions, which makes sense. I mean, I'm not in schools, I don't have a right to say we just shouldn't spend money on, but they seem pretty much logical. However, you can't just spend, spend, spend in every area. You can't spend so much in athletics, spend so much in textbooks, increase all your staffing, spend so much on technology. You've got to choose your priorities. So, if you want to spend the money on these staffing positions, find somewhere else that there's something might not be as important. Everything can be equally important. Also, we talked about blast, this meeting budget respected $20,000 for a community liaison, whatever, waste of money, basically. So, cut that out, please, if you have these other positions that you're saying are more important. Also, the last budget included doubling the middle school budget line item, increasing the high school budget by 26%. Those are massive increases. That's not only a concern for this year, the concern is that when you go to do the 2016, 2017 budget, you're going to look at your 2015, 2016 numbers as the new starting point. So, you've just introduced it, another $75,000 worth of waste that's going to appear year after year, because you're going to find other things that you want to spend the money on, because you're clearly happy to keep spending the taxpayers' money. It's wonderful that you can just raise taxes any time you want something, but that's not really the way the attitude should be. So, if there are things that are important and you want to spend money on, find ways to save elsewhere. You shouldn't be making a buzzer presentation where, "Here's another $90,000 you want to spend, enjoy, you know, giving us another $90,000 in taxes." That is disrespectful and inappropriate.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on the budget? Seeing as there's no public comment, I'd like to move on to board committee reports and recommendations. Claire, can we have the curriculum and instruction committee report, please?
Yes, the curriculum committee did meet tonight. Among some of the things we talked about were the Touchstones Program, and the reports are, it is working well in 3rd and 6th grade, and will continue in those grades. Technology committee, we spoke about having that established. We also spoke about looking for alternatives to Study Island. We had updates about the park testing, which our student representatives brought up. There was a question about Spanish for native speakers as a course. That course is on the books in the high school. Not enough students have signed up for it, which is why it's not running.
I'm sorry, Claire, what course was that?
Spanish for native speakers.
Thank you.
And currently, at all the schools in town, the principals are working on a professional development plan for next year for their schools. On the agenda, I would just point out that there are 3 items. Most include appointing people for various student teaching and for positions, working with the community teen center. On number, excuse me, on number 3 on the agenda, there, excuse me, Linda, so what circled is to be striked?
Yes.
Okay, so the last sentence, on number 3 on the agenda, which I will read out loud, it says, "Stipend for the intern will be shared between the 2 programs, and Rutgers will offer benefits to the intern." That is struck. Okay, that's number 3 on page 2 of the agenda. That last sentence is struck. So, feel free to cross it out.
Are there any comments on the curriculum and instruction report?
We had talked about the tech committee, who that would include, so maybe we can share that.
Well, in terms of the board members, we talked about board members being included this year. I would just ask that board members email me with anybody who would like to volunteer to serve on the tech committee, and then we can fill in whoever is needed on that end. The administrative end, Mr. Soto, could you speak about who you would assume would participate in that?
Well, certainly, we have, one of the principals is going to be participating. We have Bo Shlala will probably be participating. We're going to have representatives from each school in terms of the teaching staff. So, we want a nice group of educators and administrators working together in developing a very comprehensive plan, a 3-year plan that would move this district forward. One of the things that we have been discussing is that the plan must include not only just spending money, but it has to include what instructional resources can be well-connected with the equipment that we're buying, what types of professional development we need to have, and how can we best incorporate that need in every school, knowing that we have to differentiate the technology for every school.
Is that something that would be sort of like the technology task force that we had running last year, where there'd be public meetings as well, where the public would be invited to come and participate and give input and...
Right, so what's going to happen is that Brian will send out a notice tomorrow, and he's going to reconvene that committee. When that committee, at the appropriate time, the committee will do a public presentation. Yes, absolutely.
Great.
Any further comments?
Just that I'm going to go on the same topic I seem to go on a lot lately. I'm glad to hear that the committee is considering Study Island. Do those considerations include us being able to strike that from next year's budget?
Well, we're leaning towards, not a lot of people are happy with Study Island, so we're looking at other venues. And, you know, certainly, there's better programs out there, and we recognize that. So, we're looking forward to incorporating a new program with a different approach to assessment.
With a cost associated with it.
It is always a cost, yeah. But, you know, right now, we're just looking at presentations at this point, and we'll have further conversations with the teachers. I know that many of the teachers were engaged in benchmarking last year, and we're going to revisit those benchmarks to see if that's the way to go. Or both.
Both, a program and the benchmarks?
Yes, I mean, right now, we're just in preliminary conversations about that.
Right. I mean, because obviously, I'm looking at this as a potential budget item, and, you know, with even if benchmarks that are already written...
The benchmarks themselves would need to be revised, as Mr. Soto in the administration has said. So, we would have to put money behind that as well anyway, which is not budgeted for. And this, if we, depending on which route we go, would have to take this money to fund the relooking at the benchmarks.
So, right now, we're at a crux point where we have to decide if we're going to put the money behind...
money behind Study Island in the budget now, or potentially another program, or behind rewriting the benchmarks?
No, the money is fungible and can be used for anything that the board decides. What you should be considering tonight is just the overall tax increase. Anything in this budget can be moved around to determine whatever the priorities of the board and administration are at any given, at any time.
But the tax increase would be lower if we left Study Island, presumably, right? I assume it would be less money to...
Have to replace it with something.
Could it be replaced with teachers getting stipends to rewrite the benchmarks? I mean, what, no, I don't know, that's a real question. I actually don't know. When my children use Study Island, it's frequently for benchmarking. So are we talking about switching money from one benchmark item to another? Or do we need Study Island in a more global capacity for other tasks? I don't know.
Well, I think the answer is we don't need Study Island.
Great.
If that's the question, I think there are programs out there that are similar to it that Gen Nap and Mr. Soto are looking at to implement in this district.
And why do we need a technology program like in EL, I mean, Study Island is math and ELA, is that right? I mean, is it to get the kids up to speed on 21st century technology skills? Or is it because it offers educational content that we don't have in our classrooms? I really don't know, I'm not trying to, I saw a look from somebody.
For the most part, for the most part, the benchmarks that are already written by the teachers, really, they assess what the kids are learning in the classroom based on the curriculum. All right, so you match the benchmarks to the curriculum, the units of study. When we use something like Study Island, we go deeper into the skills that, you know, every kid is supposed to be able to do, you know, do by the end of the year, and we benchmark them throughout the entire year to see where they're at, at particular times of the year. So in addition to the benchmarks, we would need to use either a Study Island or some other, like an I, there's a program called I Ready that will look deeper into the needs of the kids. This way, it'll enable all of the teachers to know where each student is at, what are the needs of the kids, and most of these programs come with resources tied to the benchmark results.
Okay, I hear what you're saying. I'm just, I'm still wondering, particularly in the lower grades, and maybe it's different in high school, why we need this kind of, sort of, well, I don't know. I'm still tossing it around in my head. It seems like we have benchmarks that were written by the teachers, which don't have to be done on a computer, or we don't have to pay a program to implement them. So, I mean, we should obviously be looking at a program that's purely educational, right? If we're going to be purchasing technology? I mean, do we have...
Correct.
Rather than a benchmarking assessment, blah, 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 blah.
I think we will all feel more comfortable in waiting until probably the end of April, once we've had all the presentations, we've had opportunities to meet with the teachers and see where we're going, to develop a comprehensive program of benchmarking for the kids, something that's doable and more informative.
I know that money is fungible, but do we, can we decrease the amount that we have set aside for Study Island?
Yeah.
Great.
Absolutely.
I mean, now's...
The board has to approve any new contract, so we would not approve a contract, and that would be $15,000 in savings that could either be returned to the taxpayers at the end of the year, or be used for whatever the board deems necessary at any given time.
It's possible, I'm just not understanding how taxes work exactly, which is kind of embarrassing. I mean, could we say in our budget for the coming year, we're gonna, we don't need $15,000 for that budget, let's bring it down to 4.6999999?
We could.
We could, okay. And so we should consider that before we approve the budget, yes? That would be the time to...
This would be the timing to do that. I don't, I would necessarily support that. I would just think that this is a program that the Gen Nap and Mr. Soto has looking, is looking to expand in our district or use in our district, and we would need more funding behind that.
It should be identical funding, okay.
So, that would be mine, but it's up to every board member.
I just wanted to say, I was very happy to hear that you're talking to the teachers directly about what their needs are, because I'm sure that the children are being tested enough between the benchmarking, the SGOs, the SGP's, the park. I am confident that we know where they are, and I would think that the teachers, who spend more time than we do frankly, know where they are. So if we can save some money there, and we can give some control back to the classroom teacher, I think that would be ideal. So I really just wanted to say that I appreciate that that's on the radar.
I appreciate that, too, and I think this idea that the teachers need the software to know where the students are, I think that's problematic, at least in the lower grades, you know, through elementary school. I mean, my experience has been, I mean, maybe there are teachers who are not as good at this, but my experience has been that the teachers know with incredible precision where the students are. I mean, maybe there's a need for standardized testing to see how our school is doing, but, you know, the teachers we've had here have been very good. They can say, "This student, you know, has this problem, blah, 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 the student is reading at a whatever level." I mean, it's pretty amazing. It's not numerical, but it's, well, it is sometimes, you know, the reading level is X, you know, math level is here. I'm not sure that we need to spend money on technology to see where the students are at. More technology, I mean, we already have Up the Park happening, we'll see where they're at. I just, I wonder if that's something we can...
Do you think the park would be a fair assessment?
No.
So then, then we need a fair assessment?
I don't think we need a computerized, I guess what I'm saying is, in an ideal world, I would say, "Let's cut the Study Island budget line item out, whatever it costs. Let's give that back to the taxpayers now, or in the coming year, whenever that happens." And let's let teachers see where the kids are without technology, at least in the elementary grades. I mean, I would want to hear from somebody else in the high school, maybe perhaps it's just much more complicated there.
You have your administration, you have your direct, what is Jen's title?
She's the director of supervisors' funding programs and...
Right, so you have that title, you have your district administrator asking for this funding because they think it's necessary to provide a level playing field within our district of understanding where everybody is. I'm inclined to support them on that for $15,000, which doesn't represent, which represents less than a point in tax increases, to move forward with that.
I respect Gen Nap a great deal, I mean, and I think when Gen Nap asks for something, it's very well thought out. Nonetheless, you know, one of the few powers that we sort of do have is the budget.
You do.
So obviously, I'm not an expert like Gen Nap, however, I have, you know, witnessed a lot of children in school, and my feeling is that here, at least, I can only speak to Bartle and Irving, really, that the teacher's knowledge of where students are at is pretty, is very good and very precise without technology. So I'd love to see some money come out of the budget for technology. I realize that's contradicting, you know, the recommendation of an experienced educator. You know, I don't like to do that, but given that we are in a tight budget situation. I also think, I mean, there's a lot of things here that are less than point 1% of the budget, but we could start chipping down. I don't know if this is the time to talk about that.
I wouldn't think, I would think that this is curriculum report, but...
Okay, I don't want to...
It's up...
Okay, should I blast forward, or should I...
I mean, you should make comments on the curriculum agenda for tonight, so anything revolving around that.
Okay, I'll wait, thank you.
I just want to make it very clear, while I am not advocating on behalf of any particular program, I am advocating on behalf of knowing where each kid is supposed to be, and what are we doing to help kids move forward. So having said that, I think it would be a disservice to the district to just eliminate the $15,000 for assessment, because we're looking at it just as assessment. Why don't we just set it aside, we're gonna be looking at the various programs, we're gonna do the research, we're gonna have conversations with teachers, and then we're gonna come up front and provide this community with a very comprehensive presentation as to where we're going and where we're heading. I think if we wait, we'll all, you know, benefit from a very strong presentation. But I would not eliminate the monies for just benchmarking, they're not just benchmarking per se.
I'm sorry, Israel, did I understand you correctly, that you thought you were gonna have that, and I'm not asking for this, but I thought I heard you say that you might have that done before the April 20th meeting? Or did I, okay. And then, could I add one more level to that? Like, could you explain how, because I really don't know how it fits into this piece of evaluating students? Can you, if it does at all, how Read 180 works into that? Because from what I understand, that's a program that we're also using that is for children who are struggling, although I think maybe it's just at the middle school and high school level. Is it possible that that's something that can also be used in Bartle and Irving? And from what I understand from other districts, Read 180, there are also grants that Scholastic gives for Read 180. So that may be a way to accomplish some of the same goals, something that we could potentially apply for grants for, and have it be a little bit more budget neutral.
We've gotten Read 180 grants, correct? From a few, I think we've gotten books, just additional materials. Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, I was wondering, so Study Island, you said, was used a lot for benchmarking? I just was wondering, I just have a question about benchmarking, which is, so I understand that the point of it is to get, like, comprehensive data about where the students are. How have we been using that data? Like, have we been using it effectively? Because, like, I mean, do we change things with the information that we know?
Also, are those changes, do those changes result in, like, higher benchmarking scores? Are we, do we keep going higher and higher and higher?
Or lower and lower?
Well, I do know that the principal receives all of the information, all of the data, and the principal analyzes the data. The principal should be having conversations with the teachers, and if it's not happening for next year, or as soon as possible, these are the types of conversations that should be happening in the classroom with the children, all right, during these one-to-one conferencing. We call them, you know, student conferencing time, where the students can know exactly what the data shows, how to analyze it, what are the next steps for that student to improve in any given area. So certainly, that's, we're heading in that direction.
So it's not, sorry, so it's not that it gets reported to the board or anything? You guys don't change, like, curriculum, it's just that the teachers...
To my knowledge, no, not to the board.
The board doesn't change curriculum. The administration changes curriculum, that's not the function of the board.
So they would, the data would get talked about with the superintendent and the principals, and changes to the curriculum and programs would come from them and recommended to us?
Yeah, I was just wondering, because I think people talk about benchmarks.
Yeah, yeah, it's...
I think it'd be great to see the results at the board table. I realize it's not our job to write the curriculum, of course not, but it would be nice to see what's working and what we're using the benchmarks for. Sometimes it feels like we're collecting a lot of data, and I'm not sure where it goes. I mean, I know it goes to the principals, and the principals...
Let me ask you a question. So now you're prompting me to ask a question. So have you had an opportunity to actually sit down with teachers and to discuss the results of your exams, and what do they represent, what do they mean, and what are the next steps for you?
For our benchmarks? No.
And you could be sitting, we're not getting anyone, I just want to know where we're at. Because we talk a lot about data, but what are we doing with that data? And if we're not sharing that data with kids, well, that's something that we need to do a better job in.
Yeah, that's a great question. Yeah, I haven't been told.
And I have to say, just from a parent's perspective, I was thinking the same thing, that I've never had one of my children's teachers sit down and say with me, "Well," on their Study Island benchmark here. I've never had it used in a parent conference or anything.
It's good for us.
Yeah, we know that, I mean...
So that's an area that we need to do a better job in.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. I mean, if you know that, then maybe we need to think twice about the technology, but I won't, go on.
I mean, we know that, so it's gonna get, it's gonna get improved, is the answer to that.
Okay.
Oh, I actually have some else, really quick. I know that some of the other board members have said, if not completely striking out Study Island, replacing with other programs at lower grade levels, have, you know, in your discussions with teachers, administrative personnel, is Khan Academy something that, by the way, it's a free program that has testing capabilities and teaching capabilities? Is that something that has come up as a replacement to Park, lower grades, you know? It's a very comprehensive tool.
I really have not had an extensive conversation with Khan Academy, but it has been brought to my attention, and certainly, this is something that's been brought up to the principals for consideration.
If anything, we should just put it on our website as a link to the...
It's on the Chromebooks. Do you know that it's on the Chromebooks?
Right, it's like an app on the bottom.
Yeah, so it's available, and it's free.
And I use it, it works. So, any other comments on the curriculum portion of tonight's meeting?
The Spanish for native speakers, I wanted to just clarify, because it sounds like what's happening is that the Spanish-speaking students, native Spanish speakers, are not able to take that because something. There was some discussion...
Under...
If they are low in literacy, they don't get to take, at least this is how it was in the middle school, they don't get to take a world language because they have to do Read 180 to improve their literacy skills. Or they're so good at Spanish already that they take French, and they don't want to be in native speaker Spanish, because they're already good at Spanish. So is the program that we have, the Spanish for native speakers, is that something that is kind of like a traditional grammar-based study of the language? Or is that literature? When my son took it in sixth, he took it in sixth and seventh grade, and then they didn't have it in eighth grade, he was already good at Spanish, and it was conversation, and they read books, and it was poems... Your son took Spanish for native speakers? Yes, he did. Oh. Because he's fluent in Spanish. Okay. So, and it was great, but then it only continued for two years, because there weren't enough people to justify having it for his third year. Okay.
Like all classes, we don't run them with less than 12, 15 kids.
Right, so I'm just guessing that because Chinese is our second, well, our first most spoken language other than English, do we also have on, you know, the list of considerations, Chinese for native speakers?
I'm gonna look into that.
Okay.
I think we had that conversation, I'm definitely gonna look into it and have a conversation with Mike Glasser tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
And I just kind of worry about the kids in the Read 180 program. This is, tell me if I'm wrong, but if they're not reading up to par in whatever language, I would think that study of fiction, literature, poetry, that would probably make them more motivated, and maybe spend some extra time practicing, you know, spending time reading, or even, you know, listening to someone read. And I'm just, I'm just wondering if that's something that is, something that we want to consider changing in our, I guess, our mandatory or required courses? Can we somehow fit that in? Can we, can we change, or even just look into the possibility of changing that? Because I would think that, you know, basic skills, whatever it is they're doing, is kind of boring. I would just guess, because, you know, it's probably, you know, phonics-based or something like that. Do you know what Read 180 is? I don't know. It's a, from what I know... All I know is it's basic skills. It's not basic skills. It's for, it's remediation, but it's, the way I've seen it, it's, there's sort of three stations, one is small group with a teacher, one is small group on computers, and one is small group with actual novels.
Correct.
And so they rotate among these three groups, and depending on the teacher and how well they've been trained, it's effective.
Yep.
And it helps improve kids' reading.
And our teachers who reported, you want, yeah, why don't you talk about it?
So that's what I know about Read 180, but when I've seen it done well, it's excellent.
Claire, and Claire, we actually had a good report on it last week. You're spot on on what it actually, what the program is.
And the preliminary conversation that I've had, you know, for the most part, teachers rave about it, and they actually like it, and it is, and it is working.
Great.
And this board has put money behind funding the expansion of it over the last few years since the inception of it, you know, not seven or eight years ago.
I guess the way... I would say, I agree with you, that I think native speaking Spanish kids or Chinese kids should get to have a world language class that meets their needs.
Yeah.
So it's a shame where we have to do one and not the other. Right, it must sound punitive that, you know...
It's not punitive, it's one of the perils of a small district.
Well, I'm thinking as a student, that would feel punitive, that I don't get to take a world language because my reading is not up to par. I think that that would translate into some negative feelings. So I don't know if there's anything we can do to help that, is my question.
I think there's a number of opportunities where students don't have a chance to take classes that they want or can, and it's just the perils of a small district, and we have to, we have to...
Which I think is fine unless it's tied into their skill level, and then it becomes, you know, something that I would consider a potential pitfall.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I know a while, and probably go back a few years, we actually had some presentations and teachers talking about, talking about, you know, the Read 180, and it's on, yeah. So I'm just saying, maybe every once in a while, it would be nice to know our meetings are long, but just for certain programs like that, just to have maybe the teachers come and just give, like, an update, you know, on this, you know, on how they feel about it, on the success of programs, just because, like, for me, it would refresh my memory.
Yeah, that'd be great.
For new folks and people that don't know, you know, which I think it just would be a plus.
Jerry's right, we did have a really good presentation on Read 180 with student work and everything, so Jerry's okay with staying a little bit later.
Yeah, 10 minutes.
Yeah.
Also, I know that Montclair actually has an after-school program where a teacher or two from their similar Read 180 program trains parent volunteers to sit with the kids after school and read to them, work on their grammar, you know, help them to learn how to compose different pieces of work, and I think that might be something that we could consider, considering that, you know, we do have a small district. That might be a bonus to having such a small district that we can do that, that we can look into something like that. And I don't know that that would require a stipend or not.
It sounds like there are a lot of parents who are interested, I mean, based on what we heard last year, who would probably volunteer to do that.
Yeah.
I have no idea what the cost would be.
I don't know, but I do know that there were many, many people that came out and volunteered in that way.
We could look at a Schedule B position, because you would need some parent, you would need some certified teacher in the room.
Right.
Yeah. So I'll look into it.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else on curriculum? Ms. Bowe, can we have the finance facilities, please?
The finance committee did meet tonight. Item 10 on the agenda is grants from the Ed Foundation. Item 11 is a water fountain with a water bottle refill that we were talking about a couple of meetings ago. The teacher received this for attending a sustainability conference. Item 12 is a renewal of an existing contract at a savings of over 40 percent. Item 13 is strange. It's really just a pass-through. We're required to memorialize, I can't talk. We are required to memorialize the purchase of technology for non-public schools using state aid dedicated for this purpose.
Yep.
And this is through Middlesex County. Item 14, we have a safety grant from one of our insurance groups to make repairs to walkways. Two other items we spoke about, just, Linda was updating us that the new ordering system that we approved with Educational Data Services, the training for that has started. It's so teachers can go online, order their materials. It's double-checked by the principal, and so we assume that there will be some cost savings in the process over the year. And we also had a renewal of dental insurance, which will be on the next agenda. We had a two-year contract with no increase in price, and they are offering us the same thing, so essentially, we have four years at no increase. That's it.
Control, alt, S, Israel.
We're good. Yeah. Are there any comments on the finance facilities report?
I think Israel's computer wants to make a comment.
Yeah.
Israel's computer wants to take the park.
Wants to take the park, yeah. Catherine, is it, when it says, just for my information, when it says that on number 12, that monthly charges are eligible to be considered for E-rate discounts, blah-dee, blah-dee, blah, does that mean, so this $5,000, almost $5,500, that represents the 40 percent discount already, or we might get 40 percent off of that? Oh, Linda?
You'll get 40 percent off of that.
I see. Oh, great.
Yeah, that's the contracted price, and the E-rate for the 15, 16-year, I believe, is eligible for 40 percent. That rebate amount is being reduced, it's being phased out, so...
Of course it is.
But it's being increased or stabilized for other areas, such as our broadband, so we do have ongoing costs that will continue to be covered. Just the phones, they're phasing out.
I see, but this number is before the deduction?
Before the reduction, correct.
Awesome, thank you.
Yep, go ahead.
I had a question on the, it's the detailed monthly bill.
Yep.
So I was looking through it, and everything, you know, looked fine, except there was one thing that was kind of glaring, and this was that we're paying for musicians at $490 a piece for the Beauty and the Beast production. So I'm not sure about if I'm seeing this right, but it looked like we're spending $3,920 on eight musicians for the Beauty and the Beast production.
Correct.
I can make a few comments. First of all, this is not coming out of district funds. This is coming out of student activity funds, which are coming from the receipts from the production, so the production is supporting this cost.
Okay.
And I believe that the reason that they pay for some professional musicians is because, to support the student musicians as well. So I think they probably use as many student musicians as possible, and they just round it out with the professionals.
Yes.
They do this every year.
It's every year, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I had no idea where that money was coming from, or...
Yes, coming out of the student activity funds, which is funded from the sale of the tickets for the production.
Okay, because I have to say, going to the productions is wonderful, but it's not as cheap as I would like.
Well, there are a lot of expenses.
They're much better than they used to be, so...
They're wonderful, but I can tell you that, you know, and I'm not complaining, because it was really great to be able to take my kids, to see their friends, you know, perform. It was $75 for six of us. We could have gone to the State Theater for the same amount of money, not that I'm comparing the two, but I was wondering, you know, where that money goes, and I'm sure that the students, you know, are doing a wonderful production. They have wonderful things on the stage. I'm wondering, the finances of that, where was it coming from?
Yeah, the receipts from the production go into the student activity fund, which is dedicated toward the drama department, and that helps to, it helps to cover the costs for the production as well as other productions.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Any other comments?
Actually, yeah, just also another thing. I've seen them build the sets, and sometimes the sets get complicated. They can be like, the last production we had was a two-story set.
Yeah.
So, you know, I mean, I've seen what they do. They work with a lot of cool things. They have, like, really nice sound systems, this year at least, and, you know, I guess obviously...
Well, that we did pay for.
Right, I mean, but obviously, the more people that come, the more money we get, and the better the productions can be.
We did.
And, you know, they have, like, they bring in the products and, like, tools and, you know, equipment from outside, and I think a lot of the money that comes from their fund and their student activity, the money that they have, and so I think that, you know, just the more people that come, the more we can fund these great...
Yeah, and it was wonderful. I mean, it was really, really impressive, the two-story set, I remember. So, and, you know, so I'm thinking about these things that we have that are so wonderful and really outrageously beautiful. We never had anything like that when I was in high school, but then I'm also hearing that we can't afford wrestling singlets for some of the wrestlers, and we can't, we have a 30-year-old tuba.
Well, we shouldn't have that. We just put $50,000 to...
That's in the budget for next year.
Yeah, so I guess I'm just concerned about the displacement of funds.
It's not us. It's not us.
Drama is self-sustaining. They have their own money.
We have to give each individual student activity fund, like the senior class, the opportunity to spend the money as they raise it.
It's not our money.
They have advisors. It's not raised, it's not our money. It's not the public.
No, I know it's not our money. I just don't, as a citizen, as a parent, I just don't know these things, so I don't, you know, I feel like if I see $4,000 on a detailed bill list, it looks like it's coming out of the budget, so...
Right, no, that's fine. I mean, but I think the question is answered.
Is your question answered?
It is. It's just, it's still a concern of mine. I mean, I don't, I don't know...
What would you like to do about it, is the question?
I don't know, but I would like to be able to at least inform, as best I can, other parents who are equally clueless about these things. I don't know what we can do about that, but I do feel that there's a little bit of inequity in the way that, you know, certain programs are filled with interest and energy, and I know that comes from the student body, but I do feel like some of the students that are least served are not in the theater program. Some of the students who are least served are not, you know...
I would not agree with that. I would not, I would very much not agree with that.
Well, I think the athletic department, I think that...
If I may add, I mean, over the last several years, I mean, as long as I've been on the board, we've looked for parity in the programming, and it really, it's a conscious effort to, and it is usually between the arts and the athletics.
Athletics, yep.
So there really is work that's put into making sure that all students have opportunities. And I will say that, you know, the theater is not just arts in a way. I mean, it's almost the only tech that we've got, except for, you know, like, the homemade class, but it's really, people can get hands-on in lighting, sound, and construction. And I understand your point about, you know, not everybody takes advantage of it, but that may be because they're in the athletics, because, and again, here we are, small district, you know, everybody wants to do everything, but just from a better point of view, we really do, we have tried to...
Very much so.
We spend a great deal of money on athletics.
Athletics and we put...
Yeah, another area that I'm not informed of.
We spend a great deal of money on athletics.
Is there a similar, is there a similar thing that happens with ticket sales for sporting events, that those funds then that get dumped back, so, I mean, it sounds like there is some sort of comparable?
It is exactly, it is exactly that, and it's actually audited by our auditor, and the reason we actually literally have to give tickets at these events is because we have to account for the receipt.
For the ticket sales, right.
Yeah.
So as a board, is there anything that we can do to help promote some of the, you know, programs that are in need of funds?
The poorly attended football games.
The football games, for one. What's that? I'm sorry.
Give them more money.
The football...
That would be nice.
Or we can offer, we can offer our undying gratitude to parents of athletic games.
Right, yeah.
And music parents, and the drama parents. Like I said, you know, each group has their own, you know, I think their own support system of people that promote it and encourage it and help to raise money for an example, because with a small district like this...
No, I know, which is so appreciated, so appreciated.
And I think it'll be a good thing as we start to look towards getting our communications infrastructure built further, that the more we can let the general public know about, you know, sporting events and musicals and those kinds of things, you know, hopefully that then generates more revenues and go back to the students.
And not only things like that, but I think, you know, in terms of getting parents interested, or, you know, sometimes they wouldn't have the time, but even if they did, you know, they could decide to do it. It seems like it's word of mouth, some of it. You know, the reason that I knew about the PTO is because I speak English, and I don't have, you know, I didn't have a job when my kids were little, and so I was hanging out on the playground, and, you know, so that's how that happened. You know, for my mother, who did not speak English and did not hang out on the playground, that was never going to happen. She was not going to know about the PTO, meaning she was not going to be an officer on the PTO. So that's the kind of situation that I'm concerned with, and I know that you're more likely to get interest in certain communities if, you know, it's well-publicized.
I think we all share that concern. I think the issue is, what do you want to do about it? And that's, that's the thing. I think there's not somebody on this board that doesn't want more diversity in all of our, all of our programs, sports and arts in all of our classes. I think there's not one person on here who doesn't want equal funding for all of our programs, or fair funding for all of our programs, proportional funding. It's just, the question is, what do you want to do about it? Because we've, as Catherine has said, we've tried over years. Some years, we prioritize wrestling over football, because that's the, it's just on a cycle. Some years, we prioritize the musical programs over the theater programs, because it's on that cycle.
Right, and that's, you know, what you have to do. I just know that, you know, from my perspective, you know, I appreciate that, and I was not trying to suggest that that was in any way otherwise, but what I could offer is the perspective of a first-generation American, so, you know, that, I think, is not something that's really obviously served in any community, frankly.
All right.
So are you clear on the funding for the drama department?
Much more than I was, yes.
Good.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions on the finance and facilities report? Jerry, can we have the personnel committee, please?
Sure. Personnel did meet tonight. We discussed various personnel issues, such as maternity leave, family care, the appointment of Schedule B, a power position, some staff meets for next year, and office changes.
Very nice. Are there any comments? Seeing as there's no comments, Anne, can we have the policy committee report, please?
Policy committee did not meet tonight. I do have some news. I gather that we have constituted a policy committee of Michelle and Rob and myself, so I will be calling a meeting. I have the list, and so you all need to sort of pay attention to this at this point. So every committee needs to go through every policy in that horrible book that you all brought home. Not every policy, but those policies that pertain to your committee. So the policies in the 2,000 range are for curriculum. The policies in the 3,000 range are personnel, as are the policies in the 4,000 range. The policies in the 5,000 range are curriculum. The policies in the 6,000 range are finance, as are the 7 and 8,000 range, and the policies in the 9,000 range are personnel. The zeros and the 1,000 will have to be gone over by the policy committee, so those are the bylaws of the administration. So you're not going to be able to do these in your regular committee meetings and also get your committee work done. So this will necessitate some additional meetings that you're going to have to sort of call. If you coordinate with Susan, you can probably meet here. You don't have to meet here. You can meet at your homes. And my suggestion to you is that you take a chunk at a time. You go from, you know, 2,000 to 2,000, you know, 2,100, and you all go through them at home on your own. Make whatever changes and suggestions you have, and bring those in so that you can sort of go through very quickly, you know, is there any change to policy 2,000? No? Is there any change to policy 2,001? No? Yes, I have a change in 2,002, because otherwise, you will never finish.
Yeah, that's true. You have until December 31st?
No, no, we really actually need to finish it before December 31st, because we run out of meetings in December.
Right, to move policy, yeah.
Right, and we need to move the policies, so it actually all needs to get done sort of by the beginning of November, because we still need time to move them all.
Yep.
So they all have to go for, you know, anything that has a change has to go for first and second reading.
So, are you done? Sorry.
Uh, yeah, I'm done.
So I would recommend moving these in chunks. We don't have to wait until you finish every single one to move them. So as a committee moves them, have them on the, have your representative from the administration, Linda Israel Genapp, know that they have been reviewed and they can go on the agenda as reviewed, if there's no changes.
Right, and...
Most will not have changes, just...
Most, yeah, most. So that's the thing. We actually did manage to go through, this has to happen, this has to happen every second year. So Susan O'Doto went a long way toward cleaning things up this last time, so that you should be able to see on the policy itself the last time that it was reviewed, and again, most won't have changes. Most are pro forma, but you do need to, you are going to need to sort of work a bunch of extra meetings into your committee structure. It's going to take at least five, six, seven meetings to get through all of your policies. You don't have to do them all at once. You can do them over the course of several months, obviously, but you do need to figure out a way to do that.
Perfect.
So, welcome to policy review.
The number one thing that this board does.
Right.
Perfect. Is there any questions on the policy and regulations report? Seeing as there are none, I'd like to open the meeting up for public comment. The Board of Education has reserved the time. It's time for your comments. Please state your name and sign in.
Melissa Newman, 215 Montgomery Street. You should remember when you're talking about links, that the links on the website are seen by parents, and the links on the Chromebook are seen by students, so if a link is only on the Chromebook, a parent will never see it. Just FYI. The second thing I wanted to say is, more expanding on what Michelle was talking about, is that in the Jewish community, there's a program called, like, Parent-Student Learning, where one night a week, they go into a big gym or a cafeteria, and the parents will come in with their students, and it might just be a parent with their own children, or maybe different parents will teach other children or something, and there's no real rules. You can, like, learn whatever it is you want to learn, and its purpose is to encourage the love of learning. So some of these things that you're saying, oh, we can't do this, we're too small of a district, or students have to choose between conversational, you know, Chinese or conversational Spanish versus English 180, this might be a way to, one, get parents involved, and, two, to provide some of these extras and even cultural exchanges that the students might not otherwise get. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kim Hammond. I'm at 255 Harrison Avenue. I just had a question. After the budget presentation, there weren't really questions about the budget, per se, and then as you gave the committee reports, questions did come up specific to the budget, you know, in the curriculum report in regards to Study Island. I'm just curious, I know you talked a little bit about the April 20th meeting, and if there would be some other inter-meeting, or called them walkarounds or something with Mr. Soto and Mr. Sherman, but I'm just curious, when we should expect a board discussion to take place about the budget? I mean, based on what I heard after the presentation, I would have assumed that the budget is pretty set the way it is, and everyone's really happy with it, and that people aren't really sort of questioning expenses.
Yep. That would be my understanding as well from the conversation, so the board is free to have the conversation whenever. I am satisfied with the budget moving forward, so that's where, that's where I am. But the board is welcome to have... But the board is welcome to have conversation with the, you're right, during the presentation was an opportunity and during new business and old business will also be an opportunity and that, that is, that's our opportunities to discuss.
And the board is only going to be together then at that April 20th meeting? So the only time the entire board would really discuss something? And that's the same night that the budget is going to be voted on?
Correct. This is our third meeting of the board, of the budget, which is more, more than we've ever done in the past.
I'm just, make sure I understand the lay, the land and the...
You are correct. Yes. Your, your understanding is correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Hi, Rochelle Stern, 474 Lincoln Avenue. First of all, I want to thank you all for your important work. It's really, it's, you know, it takes a lot of time. I'm on many boards myself and I know that it's a real investment in our community that we all love. I want to just say this. I want to say, I'm, first of all, I'm married to somebody who's a third-generation Highland Parker. I love this community. I've been here almost a decade myself since we got married and, and my husband's been here 35 years since the day he came home from the hospital. So, I really love this community. I'm, I'm very involved and my children love the community. My children go to RPry, actually. They don't go to the local schools, but most of our friends send to the local schools and are thrilled with the education that you are helping to provide. So I want to thank you for your involvement with that. I do want to say this, that one of my biggest concerns is that our community remains affordable for people to move into so that we have a diverse community. I am highly concerned right now, and I apologize I came late. I would have been here from the beginning, but I was actually at a board meeting at RPry, so I came as soon as that ended. But I just want to say, we are paying higher taxes than our friends who live in Back Lawrence. For those of you who know where Back Lawrence is, it's a highly prestigious area of New York in Long Island with mansions. We do not live in a mansion. You're welcome to drive by our house. We are paying $22,000 a year in taxes right now. Most of our friends are struggling to pay their taxes and pay their, their yeshiva education so that they could send their kids to a Jewish day school, those who are choosing to send. And even those who are sending to the public schools or those who are sending to the charter schools are struggling because honestly, this has become a very expensive zip code. It has. And I don't know how we could, I don't know what we could do. I would love to be a part of the solution. I, I ask that maybe we, we have a meeting, perhaps bring in some people with profession, you know, with financial backgrounds. We have at RPry, I have to say, we, we're struggling with the same things where we have so many kids on scholarship. We're giving out way more money on scholarship than we really afford to, just to put it out there, you know, it's public information. You know, we raise $200,000 at the scholarship breakfast every year and we give out 1.2 million in scholarship. So there you go. You know, you have a huge distance that you have to cover. And when you add it to the fact that, that people are, are paying and, and just they can't make ends meet, they really can't. So I wonder, and we've had to really tighten our belts, we've had to, to really ask people who have a background in finance to sit there and just go through the numbers, go through the numbers. I can't even tell you how they've managed to squeeze every possible place that they can. And I would just ask that, and I'm sure you're doing that, I'm sure you are, before you go ahead and suggest a raise to increase taxes substantially, which is, I know what's on the table. But perhaps before we go ahead and just do that, is there a way that we could look at it one more time and just see? Because I have to say, I don't know that I could get many more of our friends to consider moving here. And I think it's a wonderful community and for everyone. I know that somebody had mentioned to me that one of the reasons for the raise, and maybe this is just hearsay, but they'd said that because of the number of students who are going from Highland Park now to the charter school in East Brunswick. I would love to know more information about that. I really would. I'd love to know what the exact numbers are, what the exact cost to our areas. I, I just, I, I would like a little bit more information if that's possible. So if there's any way you could let me know how I could get that information for myself, for our community.
Absolutely. In terms of the charter school number, Linda, can you speak to that, please?
That, that information was presented at the last budget meeting.
Yeah.
We have the first two budget presentations on our district website, which gives a lot of information. Both of those presentations discuss, referred to the charter schools. In the first presentation, we didn't know what the cost was going to be because we were waiting to hear from the State Department of Education as far as what our state aid would be. And they tell us what we have to budget for charter schools based upon projections. At the second meeting, at the second presentation, we had the numbers from the state and the projections did go down from the projections for the current year. So that was a big savings in our budget. It went down by $171,000, which is significant. But it's still about $400,000.
Wow.
For charter schools in total.
And is there anything else that we could do perhaps to, is this a guarantee that our, our taxes are getting increased four point, what was it, 62%? Is there something else that we could do?
62.
Four point, what is it?
Four point. It was 4.1 at the last budget presentation.
Right, now, this one is, this one is 4.47.
4.47.
Yep. So, the board is within our authority to discuss, to discuss this budget and fund it however, however we deem, we deem fit.
Okay.
So, the answer is yes, there's can be conversations on it. I can't guarantee you the outcomes of those, but...
So is there any opportunity for the public at this point going forward to get involved in this discussion? So it's really going to be whatever will be behind closed doors?
The next, the next public board meeting will be April 20th.
Right.
Which still has an opportunity for the public to make comments and the board to make changes to, to the budget.
Prior to the vote?
Prior, prior to, prior to approval of the budget.
Okay, great.
We are in discussions of having a kind of town hall type meeting or another type of meeting that would be more informal for questions and, and answers.
Yeah, I don't know what the solution is. I feel terrible. I know we're all, we're all in this together. We all want the community to remain diverse and to be a community where people could afford to come and start their families. I have to tell you, most of our friends who are at that stage where they're, they're trying, like I even have a younger sister, for example, she's a nurse, her husband's a lawyer, and they can't afford to buy here. We desperately want them to come and start a family so that we have cousins in the area. None of my husband's siblings have been able to come back to the area. That's a tragedy after three generations of being in Highland Park. Something is not right. So, I would just hope that we all kind of work together as much as possible and I appreciate all your work for this. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Can I just ask if you, since you're on the board, excuse me, since you're on the board of RPry and seem to have heard a lot of ideas?
Sorry.
I can't, I'm not allowed to respond?
We're not doing, yeah, we're not doing responses.
I can't make a comment?
No, I prefer if we save comments for new business in terms of, in terms of interaction. If you have a clarif, if you have a clarifying question, I'm gonna...
It is a clarifying question.
Then, please, please...
So my comment to you is since you're on the board of RPry and have had the opportunity to meet with a lot of financial professionals, if you can find anything that you would suggest that we do with the budget, we would welcome it.
Wait. Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Hi, Andrew Getreer, 801 South Second Avenue. And actually, RPry had a major budget deficit last year and present and approved a, a break-even budget this year mostly because of the woman sitting in that chair. So you should talk to her afterwards or whenever you're allowed to speak to people. So I wanted to, I wanted to underscore the, the two prior speakers because, and I don't remember your name, I'm sorry. Yes? Kim, because you asked if you folks here on the board are satisfied with the budget. And I saw different reactions silently, but only one, obviously the chair spoke.
Yep.
I would like to reiterate that question for all of the other folks who we voted for in this, on this board. You're not committing to anything because the official vote is until April 20th, but I'd like to, I'd like to poll the board. Are you satisfied at this moment with the way the budget is?
Mr. Getreer, our policy does not allow people from, participants from the podium to poll the board. All questions should be addressed to myself and to Mr. Soto.
Adam, would you please ask your fellow board members to respond if they're satisfied with this budget?
During new business, we'll have a discussion on, on the budget.
Which is when?
Which is following the vote, the votes, after this public comment, following the votes that will happen quite quickly, then new business will happen.
And will you ask them that question at the new business?
I think, I'm, I'm not going to put board members on the spot, no. I will not. Board members are free to express...
Would you give board members the opportunity, if they wish, to voice their opinion?
They will, board members...
For the general public to hear?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Board members do have that opportunity.
I appreciate that. I thank you for that. And I wanted to underscore something that Rochelle said, which I happen to know a lot of young people who live in this community, young couples, starting families, they rent, and they are desperate to find a place to live here and they can't. Because even if there's an affordable home, they can't afford to pay the taxes. And it is, it is part of your job, I, I really believe, to take this into account. We won't have a successful school district if we don't have young families that can afford to live here. My kids are not in the public school and most of them are like out of, you know, they're older now. But we're paying in taxes now more than my federal and state income tax combined. And I think that's probably not that unusual. And that's crazy. I'm paying well over 10% of my household income in local taxes, of course, the vast majority of which are the school taxes. And that's crazy. And I think that as you think about and debate and discuss the budget in the, between now and April 20th, please take into account affordability on behalf of your fellow Highland Park residents because it is a crushing, crushing issue. And if we are lucky enough that we saved $171,000 because of the charter school projection went down, let's pocket the $171,000 and not spend it. Let's save where there is an opportunity to save and if we can find creative ways to save, add to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excuse me, sir? Did you sign in?
Oh, thank you.
I did just want to clarify that we did pocket that 171.
Thank you. So, but we're still going up to 4.7%.
We didn't pocket, we didn't pocket anything.
Well, we didn't spend it elsewhere.
No, we weren't, we're not returning it. He's asking us to return it to the taxpayers.
We did. It's not, it keyed down off of the budget.
The projected increase was higher, now it's lower.
Well, if the proj, the projected increase, as I understand, is 4.47?
Yep.
So how did, what was it?
That's my point, that's my point, yeah.
We didn't actually, it didn't go down because of that?
It, what it was from the first meeting to the second meeting went down.
I think it did.
Yes.
Hello. Sharice Richardson, 227 Benner Street. Takes a little time to write all that. So, just a couple of really quick things. One, I'm glad to hear that we're looking at alternatives to Study Island because I think it's outdated. It's not doing what it needs to do. And so I'm really pleased to hear that other options are being sought. I would also be okay with us not having a benchmark electronic piece to that if it is something that can be conducted in the classroom in a different way and then that data be reported to the principal for the individual students in that class, if that's a possibility, if that's a way that we can save a tiny, a tiny pool of money. I do also want to speak to what Michelle was, was, was talking about and I understand that, you know, student organizations, student clubs and activities are funded, you know, specifically through the work that you do. And, you know, and you work hard and you collect the money and you put on the types of productions that you want to put on. I think the thing that we really need to do is to put some effort into encouraging people as a community to go out to the other events. Because the Theater Arts Program is one of the best programs in the district, they are able to raise a lot of funds. And they also received a really nice donation to help to update the theater. Our sports programs, however, which are utilized largely by our minority students, particularly basketball and football, do not have that same level of financial backing. Their parents don't have that kind of money. There's no benefactor to step up to say, we're going to make this, this donation and get singlets for the wrestlers, for instance. And so, you know, if we can't do that through fundraising internally in the student organization, then I think we need to, as a community, begin to go out to our sporting events and begin to support the students by buying tickets, which will help to fund the programs that they want to be a part of. It also shows those students that they matter too. When nobody shows up at your event, that's really disheartening. So, and I think, I think the theater program, it's a wonderful, wonderful program that we run. It's a really well-run program. It's got a lot of energy behind it. I just would like to see that type of energy put into things where students whose families may not have the same means, you know, are participating. And the last, the last thing, and that's just about community support. I mean, that's really about going and spending $5 on a ticket to go see the basketball game so that the varsity team and the JV team feels like somebody really cares about them. And, you know, and there was a time here in Highland Park when that happened. And people who've lived here in Highland Park for a long time know that there was a time when people went out to the games in droves and the stands for the football stadium would be filled with people. Those days are long gone. I used to live on North Fourth at that time and they were very raucous games and I could hear them from my apartment where I rented at that time. So, and then the last piece is, thank you all for all of your service. Thank you for doing due diligence, for stating your commitment to really providing a thorough look through the budget in terms of how money is spent and trying to ensure the best equity possible. And, you know, really, I encourage you to, to really consider, as you are having to go through the budget, to find where we can find pennies because of the structure of our school funding formula from Trenton and how we're being underfunded by Trenton even despite the fact that we have a mandate from the Supreme Court of New Jersey that the governor fund us appropriately. So, in that, when you're finding your pennies, please do consider who, what, who's, who is impacted by those decisions when you're looking at things? You know, where are our great programs? What are, where are our programs that are struggling? How can we re, you know, adjust some of those things and, and how can we make sure that funding is, is spread out in a way where we don't cause a disparate impact on different groups? Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to make one comment that the football team is one of the...
Why are we looking at me every time?
Because, you know, you go to the, you go to the events. Is that, it's one of the more, not even that, it's one of the fundraising wing of it.
Parents of athletic team, yeah.
Yeah, funds a substantial amount of money into the, into the...
That's just the football team, that's all athletics.
Right. And it's not only all athletics, also, they've received a sizable donation themselves over the last few years for uniforms and helmets, I believe, from a former, from a former student. So, as we've said before, parity, I don't think we should make assumptions that we're not trying to do that and that we're not trying, that we're not trying to fund everybody as fairly and equitably as, as possible and that everybody is involved in providing everybody the equal opportunity.
Right. And but Sharice's point was spot-on about just, just the whole community aspect of it, about going to whatever the event is. And I know, you know, some events are more expensive than others and believe me, I've seen people fight over paying $5 to a football team.
Right.
Kind of blows your mind. But the more people that go, obviously, the, all these monies do go back into the programs, but the more important thing is you're supporting your community. We're just supporting our kids, whether your kid's playing that sport or that instrument or singing or not. I graduated from here myself, Sharice, and I mean, you could, everything was packed.
Mm-hmm.
And no matter what program, event, sporting, music, I mean, everything was packed years ago.
Yeah.
So I, I don't know, I've been trying and...
When I was here, when they, when they were good, it was packed. When they were bad, it wasn't.
Right, it's packed.
No, it wasn't.
We were bad, it was packed. We were bad, it was packed. Although we were good in the 80s.
Yeah, we weren't good when I was here.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Sharice, I was hoping you would mention about the, the...
The diversity.
The post-op, the diversity day. Just since there's people online that can hear your announcement. And I also wanted to make sure the public is aware of the group that Sharice has started, the Parents of Students of Color. They have a great Facebook page, there's a lot of comments, and I've enjoyed participating and reading what most people write. So, thank you for organizing that.
Most.
Most. I didn't say all.
Sharice Richardson, speaking on behalf of Highland Park Parents of Students of Color now. So Highland Park Parents of Students of Color is working together with the Highland Park Teen Center to present the Diversity Dinner, which is, is going to be a potluck, potluck-style event, which will be held on Thursday, April 16th. It'll be 6:30 to 8:30 in the Highland Park High School cafeteria. And what we're basically asking people to do is to make a dish representing your culture, come out and enjoy the event, talk with people you may have never met before, listen to some music, play some games. We're, we're creating games for the event to make it sort of educational as well. And it'll be a really nice opportunity, I think, for our, our community to be able to come together and really celebrate all of that diversity that we have here. And have the opportunity to sort of do something really positive, and just something fun and enjoyable, and, you know, spend time together. So thank you for inviting me back to, to the podium to mention that. And there are flyers over here on the side.
Thank you.
Sharice, do you need to be a person of color to come to this event?
That's an excellent question. No, you do not. Well, thank you for that question, Claire.
Because I'm planning on going, and I am not of color.
I am of many colors.
Okay.
No, you do not have to be a person of color. You do not even have to cook a dish specifically from your culture. You can just cook a dish you like to cook. But we are trying to highlight all of the cultures that are here in Highland Park, and have people taste one another's food, and, and talk to one another, and listen to some music.
Thank you.
Great idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Seeing as there's no public comment, I'd like to move to the Board Action Items section. Claire, can we have the curriculum instruction report movement?
Yes. I would like to move, excuse me, items one through three on the agenda, including the strikeout on item number three that I read in before.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any comment? Linda, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Aversa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simmerusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Mr. Roslowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Ms. Bull, can we have the finance facilities motions, please?
I move items one through 14 on the Finance Committee agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any comment? Linda, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Aversa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simmerusti?
Yes, but abstain on nine since it's regarding my travel.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Mr. Roslowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Ms. Aversa, can we have the Personal Communications, please?
Yes, I'd like to move items one through eight on the agenda.
Second.
Is there any comment?
Actually, I did want to ask about six. I meant to ask about it before, the appointment of volunteer advisor for the Highland Park High School, a robotics person?
Yep.
How is, just wondering how that's going to be run, how kids are going to be selected?
It's an after school.
The club is already existing. We had a, we had an advisor. He actually is now going to be a coach of the softball team, so we needed another advisor. She's just stepping in until the end of the year on a volunteer basis.
Gotcha.
There, the club is already underway.
Already going. Fabulous, thank you.
Actually, can I comment on that?
Yep.
So Ms. Simmerusti, just another thing, on our, during our competition, Mr. Lester will be with us, because we can't just have a volunteer advisor on the trip. We need a more official, you know, person who's all, who has like an official position with the school.
Right.
So he's going to be with us at, at the trip to Rowan University.
Great.
Unless we actually get an advisor, you know, put in officially. So, just another.
Thanks.
Any other comments? Linda?
Ms. Aversa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simmerusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Mr. Roslowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Anne, can we have the policy? No policy. There is no president report? Is there any other, is there any old business?
I had a question about the Public Advisory Committee for limited English proficiency families.
The one that was Ms...
Sorry. I think it was Ms. Lessinger got up and spoke about, and also Ms. Perret.
Yeah, that one, the one that we don't have, yes.
Yes, the one that we don't have, so that answers my question. Okay.
Question.
I just wanted to know what the status of that was, and if that was being put together yet? I think it was a mandatory committee.
The, the, what, if the bilingual advisory?
For limited English proficiency families, Public Advisory Committee is apparently state mandated.
I have, I have Bill back here. Bill, can, can you update us in, in the respect of the...
You have to use the mic.
Bill, use the mic.
Can I say it my name?
Yeah.
And where are you? Bill Schlauer, Director, Inter Director of Special Ed. We addressed this in the ELL report we presented to the board back in, I believe, October, which was a committee of community members, staff members, including all our ESL instructors and administrators. That committee reviewed our entire program, made specific recommendations. Actually, I believe that one of the recommendations to reinstate an ESL position is in the budget for next year. As part of that, we indicated that for next September, we will be moving forward with an ongoing, two actually, a parent advisory group, which would be like CPAC, because that's what it is.
Yep.
It would be a majority of parents, and we'd provide them whatever support we could. We also indicated we would continue to review the ongoing work that we had begun in this report, so nothing fell between the cracks. So that, that's where that stands at this point. So by, in September, Jen Knapp and I have already spoken about the fact that we're going to send out a general invitation, once we've identified our children for next year. We're going to send out a general invitation to a meeting, we'll help get it started, and then it's up to the parents to continue it from there.
I think that meets the requirements that she was speaking of.
Yeah, so I, I just assume that the communication would be sent in native languages?
Yes.
Okay.
We have the people to do it.
Very good, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Bill.
Is there any other old business? Yep.
I have questions, but I don't know if they're old business or new business.
Pick one. Yeah, go for it.
One of the things I wanted to address is a few people spoke about taxes tonight. I hope you understand, the reason our taxes are so high in Highland Park is we do not have a lot of businesses in town paying taxes. A lot of towns have a lot of businesses that pay a lot of taxes. So that's one reason for the few people that spoke about taxes, that's a big issue in Highland Park. So we need to fill the stores with businesses that will pay taxes. And somebody, I think Michelle, it was you, you brought up, you spoke about SGP's. Do you know what that is? SGO's would be the benchmark in the beginning? No. SGO's are Student Growth Objectives, and it has to do with how much the students improve on their tests. And SGP's are something that goes into a teacher's evaluation. The profile. Student, no, it's student growth percentile. No, I meant the, the teacher's profile. They have a, like a... Yes, the evaluation for the teachers, but it's only some of the teachers, and it has to do with how much the students improve on testing. Right. I just wanted to make sure you, you understood that. Yeah, I get sometimes the, the lingo and the, you know... Right, no, it just sounded like it was another thing, and it's not really another thing, it's just a result of the test. Well, I think from the student's side, it is another test. It's another... No, it's the test they already take. So it would be... The SGO, I mean, not... The SGO is, the SGO is something the teacher makes up. To test, to test, to, to look at the students. So they might be the reading scores. The reading scores, I predict, are going to go up 20% or 5%. They set it. And whatever they get on that, that's part of their evaluation. That's the SGO. Right. Student Growth Objective. Student Growth Percentile has to do with how much a kid improves on standardized tests. Okay. And that becomes part of the teacher's evaluation. Okay, so the, the word, the term benchmarking was wrong, then? The term benchmarking has something to do with the curriculum. Okay, so that was, because in the beginning of the year, my daughter came home, this is really personal, this is kind of how I understand it. She came home and she said that she was given a test, and she didn't know any of the answers. It was a math test, and she loves math. And so, you know, you can imagine, I'm so thrilled, I have a daughter who loves math. I'd never thought, right? So she is devastated. She knows that she, she knows, she's telling me that she's no good at math. Fourth grade is not, you know, for her. And so in kind of trying to figure out where this was coming from, I came across the idea of benchmarking and SGO's, maybe I got the terms confused, but this was a test that was given to prove to the students that they did not know this, so that at the end of the unit, that they would be able to prove that they knew the same material. So they're given a test on purpose with material that they have not been presented with, so that they are failing, frankly, like failing that test on purpose, and then they are able to take the same test, or something similar, at the end of the unit to show that they now know that material.
And my understanding was that this...
Nope.
That sounds like it was a pretest.
Yeah.
But did you talk to the teacher about it?
I did not talk to the teacher specifically, because I did not know if this was something that is specific to her class, or was...
No, but my understanding is this is what study, in many other grades, this is what Study Island is being used for. The benchmarking that's being done in Study Island is what's being used as the teacher's SGO. So it is all kind of wrapped in, and I, I have gone in and looked at the benchmarks and stuff, and, you know, and both of my kids bombed them. So, I mean, it really is, it's certainly a practice that, you know, I would like us to look at as a district. I mean, when you have kids walking in the door, and the first thing they do is, you know, you know, bomb this, you know, this benchmark that's being given to them, you know.
Another reason that the...
So why do you think if we write them ourselves, it would be any, it would be any different?
Well, I don't know if that's the same as what I was suggesting. I was just explaining that benchmarking is something that, you know, might not require that pretest that shows that they're failing, that, I don't know that that's what they're doing on Study Island, but it looks to me like that's the same thing. So I think a teacher's benchmark might be a little bit less, I don't know the word, stringent, I don't know. Maybe they, the teacher might not need to do that, to, to prove that they don't know something seems kind of a waste of time and energy and...
No, but not, not necessarily. I mean, pre-exams are not, you know, they're not given to kids as a punitive measure.
No, I understand.
You know, it's very important for teachers to understand where the kids are at at any given point, what is exactly that they know. So let's say, for example, math, right? And this particular unit is focusing on multi-step problem solving, right? And so I'm a teacher, and I want to know how well my kids understand multi-step problem solving. So I'll give that, my class, a pretest, based on the skills that are going to be taught in that unit. So, based on the results, I know, aha, I know how to best help my kids. Now at the end of the unit, I want to assess, how much did each and every individual kid grow?
Right.
You see? And, and if they didn't grow enough, then why? And that's where the individual conferences come in, this is where I then I prepare additional resources to help that child meet the standards required at the end of that particular unit. Without the pretest, I would have no idea.
If you...
I'm just teaching.
If you look at any book...
I don't know what the problem is.
If you look at any, if you look at any textbook that we have, there's a pretest and a post-test within that textbook. It's the way to figure out where, what needs to be taught during the, during the portion.
Well, I think there might be a consequence to, to doing that, is what I'm saying. And, and that's what I'm explaining, is that my daughter is not poor in her math skills, and yet she failed that test. So I don't know what purpose that honestly serves. If you have not presented the material, how is it possible that these students have any knowledge? And if they do, it's cursory knowledge at best. So I don't know why this is something that seems to be something that we're willing to throw money at, as well as time.
So as a teacher, how do I, how do I determine whether at the end of the unit, whether, let's say, kids show, how do I show significant progress in any given unit, if I don't have a pretest? So I can teach, and at the end of the, at the end of the lesson, 60% of the class passed the test. Now, was that due because I'm a great teacher? Or was that due because the kids already knew it?
Exactly.
But I thought the point was to get them to understand the material, not to prove...
But you don't know what they don't know.
But teachers figure that out pretty quickly. I mean, this may be required by state mandate, I don't know. If you're going to have an SGO, maybe it has to be numbers or SGP.
Well, you know, when I started as a teacher, we didn't have Common Core, and I always provided my kids with a pretest. I wanted to know where they were at at any given point of the year, and see, you know, how much they progressed.
Us in the 70s, it was like...
And it had nothing to do with Common Core, it had nothing, just...
No, no, I'm not suggesting that it does.
Just good at sound pedagogy.
No, right. I mean, in the 70s, we used to, the teacher would talk to the class, and we'd have a discussion about fractions, and when it turned out, nobody knew about fractions, we'd learn about fractions, and if one kid knew about fractions, that kid would get some advanced work. You know, it wasn't like, it didn't need to be quite so, I don't know.
And the word Common Core did not...
How do you decide who gets the advanced work?
Well, one kid is obviously like doing the problems very easily. I mean, did you, when you...
It's not subjective, though.
But why wouldn't you test kids on the skills, the last skills that they learned? I mean, that's...
But some kids know stuff, even if they haven't been taught it, some kids already know stuff, some kids don't.
And do you think as a teacher, teacher, you would not recognize that?
I mean, it always happened for me.
I'm just saying, it's an educational theory, so you might want to, you know, maybe read some of the educational theory around pretesting, and you can decide what you think, but it's, it's a common practice.
I might read the theory, but I have seen it in practice, and I know I don't like it.
Well, then you're entitled to that opinion.
Yeah.
But that's important, that you know that that's your opinion.
Yes, and it is my opinion, and like, you know, so many people have said, it's our fiduciary responsibility to spend the money of the district. I would not spend money on something I don't like.
That makes perfect sense.
Yes.
I think we understand the purpose is to show growth, you know? Even people who are really good at fractions at the beginning of the year, they should be expected to show some growth. That's a great objective. I just, I feel like, in the 1970s, which was, you know, not an ideal situation, teachers picked up pretty quick, in many ways, in this way maybe, teachers picked up pretty quickly, who already knew the topic and who didn't. I understand times...
I don't know that that's true.
That is so subjective.
I think that there are an awful lot of people that, that have come to the podium in this room to tell us that we didn't pick things up in the 70s or the 80s, that, that we, that we have a problem. So, I, I mean, I'm glad that you feel like you were taken care of, and I really am not being sarcastic.
No, 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 that's not what I mean. That's not what I mean, but...
But, but I think that to say that in the seventies and the eighties, all of our students' problems were...
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that in terms of teachers knowing who's behind and who's not behind and whether we need technology to do that. I fully understand that. I, you know, I, for example, went to a segregated school and people's needs were not being met. But we didn't need a computer to tell us that.
I don't believe teachers know where every student is in their classroom at any given time. And I don't think of subjective, the subjective, and the subjective part of that of they know, they know or they don't know, or they have a feeling or they don't have a feeling can make up for this hard, hard knowledge that we have.
I would disagree that you need to do a pretest to figure out where your kids are in terms of in the classroom. I think you can do it with regular testing to see where they're at, but you don't need to pretest them at the beginning of every section to find out that they don't know the material that you're gonna teach them in the, in the next session. You know, you don't need to like have all the new kids who are taking a Spanish class, you know, say, okay, do you know any of these words in Spanish? No, you don't know any of these words in Spanish. Now we're gonna teach the next session and see if you can learn those words.
That's what we do. We say, do you, can you speak any of these words in Spanish? Do you belong in this, in this course level?
In this course level, but then do you continue doing that for every session that you're having? Like as you go from week to week, you continue to do that?
I don't know.
It's something for us to think about.
Yeah. We're asking...
No matter how ridiculous it seems to some board members.
Yeah, well, no, we're asking our teachers to do differentiated instruction in the classroom and if they don't...
We failed so many...
Yeah. It's, it's very hard for them. I mean, they've got over 20 kids in a classroom. And there are kids who don't speak up and kids who fake it really well.
Yeah.
And this is, I believe, a good way to assess where our kids stand. And then you can work with them and try to give them, I mean, it's something for the teachers to use. And again, I would have to hear from teachers about how they use this, but I would think it would be actually very useful to...
Well, maybe this gets maybe a little bit more to the heart of it. What my concern is, and I think other people's concern is, and the concerns that are being addressed kind of at the state and federal level, is the amount of testing. You have testing that's mandated at the federal level. You have testing that's mandated at the state level. You have testing that's mandated at the local level. Then you have testing that's, you know, added on on top of that for benchmarking. For what? And at some point, you're doing so much assessment that where is the time for learning? So the things that I think we need the feedback from our teachers on is kind of like we said, great, we're collecting this data with Study Island. Are our teachers using it? Are the teachers just doing it because they've been mandated to do it by the district? Are we actually learning anything? I mean, I remember when we were having conversations about a new curriculum for BARTLE last year, part of the conversation was that we were supposed to be getting data from that curriculum that was going to then align with the state tests and that we were gonna be tracking that. If we have that going with the curriculum we purchased, why do we need Study Island on top of it? Why do we need benchmarks on top of it? You know, those are the kinds of questions that I want to ask. I don't think anybody is saying that assessments aren't valid and that we don't want to know where our children are at any point in time, but how many different ways are we trying to get the same information and, you know, what's the most successful way that's the least intrusive on our students so they can do more learning than assessing?
And what requires us to spend the least amount of money to get the same amount of data? Because at this point, we're spending on the federal level, on the state level, on the local level to do the same data collection. It seems a little superfluous.
Any other, is there any other old business?
One more thing. The last time we had a meeting, Sharice got up to the podium and suggested we take a tour, like a live tour of the high school in session. Is there interest in doing that? Can we talk about scheduling that?
So...
Oh, absolutely. You let me know and we'll, we'll contact Mike Lassiter or we'll schedule the date.
Which school?
You're talking about the high school?
The high school primarily, yeah.
Okay.
And middle school? I'd love to see the middle school too. We did this at the high school. It was great. It was a fantastic tour he gave me.
You did it already?
Yeah, I did.
As a group?
We were, we were gonna be a group, but there was a scheduling conflict at the last second, so it didn't work out, but certainly be happy to go again if others are going. I don't want to take Mr. Lassiter, just for me.
Just contact me and then I'll, I'll, I'll have that conversation with Mr. Lassiter.
Great. That'd be great.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I, I think those comments in particular about taking the tours, something that we all, I think, felt and understood. It's just so many of us, myself sat in those classrooms, know what the diversity is, know what the reaction is, know all of that. So it's not a surprise to me when people get up and speak about that. It's not a, it's not news to us. This board, for the last nine years, have been looking for solutions to deal with the problem that we know. The identified problem that we have, that we know there is a racial issue, we know, we know there's an economic issue within this district. The solutions that we've come up with have not worked. And we're always looking for new solutions. We've pushed towards AP and honors courses. We've diversified our educational curriculum. We've done, we've, we've put money towards a number of projects, including after-school activities and after-school, after-school remediation. They just haven't worked. So we're always looking for new opportunities. So I think the fact that people think that we don't understand that, and I think Catherine probably said it better than anybody, this is an issue we know. Just because it's an issue doesn't mean we're not looking for solutions.
So maybe one of our upcoming meetings, you said you'd like to, I think we talked about having a meeting to focus on discipline, for example. Maybe we'll do one on special ed, you know, I don't know. Maybe we need to have a meeting where we have one of our FOKI be the racial issue. Segregation, economic and racial in the high school, in the rest of the school, and what we're gonna do next. I mean, I know nothing's worked. I, I know this board...
And it hasn't changed.
No, I understand that. I know. We've been talking to people who've been, you know, doing this for like 20, 25 years and they say, wow, we're in the same boat as we were then. And they've worked hard and you've worked hard. So maybe, maybe we set aside a meeting where we really focus on that and figure out what we're gonna do next. As pessimistic as we may be.
No, I think, no one's pessimistic. I believe we have, I believe we can do things. I believe it's targeted and I believe the funding needs to be changed from supporting certain programs, which are a lot of our rich families like, to not supporting programs that are gonna help remediate some of the issues we have. And that's been the hard, that's been a hard choice for many people in this district.
I want to go back to touring the school. So I would encourage this board to take the time to, to visit the school and, and I want you to take the time to reflect and when was the last time that you actually visited the schools? I mean, certainly you represent the schools and you're with this board. So the question is, when was the last time that you visited Irving? That you visited BARTLE? That you visited the middle school and the high school? And let's make that happen. I think visibility is very important. It's good for the administrators. It's even better for the kids to know that their board actually cares for them because they're in there.
So I know it's gonna be hard to do, but I think it would be great if we could all go together.
Yes.
I, I would encourage that, absolutely.
Is that, is that allowed with the rules as is?
Yeah, we can...
It would have to break into...
Technically, that's a quorum.
Is that allowed?
Technically, it's a quorum, but we're not, if we don't discuss...
We're not gonna be discussing business as a unit.
Exactly. We're gonna be in the schools.
But if we don't discuss, I'll talk to Jonathan, but I, I know boards can go on tours of the district. I'll talk to Jonathan and get back to, get to the board, but I think it would be a great exercise for us together to be able to do if legal...
Nothing said to. It's not about administering the schools or having a public meeting. No, I, I thought I heard somebody saying we don't administer the schools, so it'd be inappropriate, but, I mean, we should see the schools. You know, I know I'm only at BARTLE and I've been at Irving. I've been in the high school once, twice, you know. It's, I'd like to see what I'm talking about.
You can go on the crack tour with, Linda took us on a few years back. All the cracks in the building.
Well, that wouldn't be, that sounds like a lot of fun.
Point out the flaws.
No, no. In addition to seeing the cracks on the walls, I, I think it's even better for you to visit the classrooms and have conversations with the kids and see the wonderful things that are happening in the school.
And I appreciate you saying that because I do think that it's very important for us to get into the schools physically. But I think that, you know, I'm, I'm hearing very loud and clear that it's been an issue, that it's been a focus, and I did not ever consider that it wasn't. I think that everything that's been done has been done with all kinds of, you know, vim and vigor to exactly pinpoint that problem. I don't think that anyone has ever said like, that's not, you know, top of the list. But I do think that in order to serve that community best, you need to speak to the community that's under-stirved and not assume that we know what's best. You know, we're here as representatives of the community, so in order to find out what's actually happening, what's making things difficult for the people who are struggling, the students, the families, et cetera, that we do need to speak to them and ask them rather than tell them what we are doing.
And you think that was not happening?
I did not see that happening.
It could happen more, even if it's happening now. I mean, I, I don't think any criticism is implied by saying we could do more.
No, I don't.
Yeah, I'm speaking for myself. I did not see that happening.
Okay. I don't find that to be true.
I find that it's even more powerful than instead of, you know, we've been talking about Read 180 and all the wonderful programs and Spanish as a vernacular language and we can continue on and on, rather than just talking about it, it, it's more insightful for you to see it in action. And, and that will help guide the conversation when we're talking about future budgets. And so when we're talking about important programs and important resources that we have, that you might not fully understand, the best way to understand that is visit these schools and see these programs in action. Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Is there any other old business?
Uh, yeah, I will bring up again the idea of a volunteer grant writer. I thought about it again as I was researching this Read 180 and the fact that there are grants out there that seem pretty readily available. And we had talked about drawing up a a job description for that position and working with Borough to get information out to, you know, I think we have a lot of people in this community who would love to help out and I'd really like to see us move on that as quickly as, as possible. Um, and I will bring up again, since the funding issue's come up a couple of times in terms of, you know, we keep seeming to be plugging budget holes with increased taxes and this is not beneficial to anyone. And I, I've mentioned a couple of times from the board table, you know, the predicament that our district is in and other districts across the state in terms of underfunding from the state level. And I just wanted to share with everyone that the Education Law Center has updated their funding research on their website and I would encourage everybody to take a look. You can go to edlawcenter.org and go under their research tab under school funding and it's, it's, it's wild. I mean, they haven't updated this in a couple of years. Um, and now the 2015, 2016 numbers have been updated and for the fiscal year 2016, Highland Park is underfunded $700,000 by the state. State gives us that $700,000, you're not looking at a property tax increase in your bills. And this is something we've been dealing with year after year since 2009. And now the Education Law Center has it broken down by year. 2009, we were, we were good with the state. We were flat. We'd been fully funded. 2010, $600,000. 2011, $2.2 million. 2012, $2.6 million. 2013, $3.5 million. 2014, $4.9 million. 2015, $5.6 million. And now as of 2016, since 2009, our district has been underfunded by the state $6.3 million. That's a wild amount of money. We have that money in our budget. We are not raising your taxes. I can't say this enough. I know it is very hard to see your property tax bills increase and no one wants to see this. But the things that we have cut out of this budget over the last six years. We are, I mean, we've said this before, we are now cutting bone on bone and trying very strategically, okay, we really, we tried to get rid of that guidance counselor, but gee whiz, we really can't. We've got kids with a lot of needs. And then on top of that, you know, you can look, you can kind of sort through this data and see the kids that we're serving this, in this district, we're also serving a population of students that has far greater needs than a lot of our neighboring districts. So when we have a 34% free and reduced lunch program or free and reduced lunch population, that is dramatically higher than any of our neighboring districts. This district has, district has needs that other districts that are our neighboring districts simply don't have. So the combination of these two things unfortunately ends us up in this place where the tax burden continues to rest on, on all of us. And it's a, it's remarkably unfortunate situation. So I will continue to advocate, you know, that this board joins with other boards across the state and tries to do something about this issue on the state level. We've been trying for years. It's, you know, it's an uphill battle to try to get more, you know, the, the funding that the, the district is, is owed by the state, but doesn't mean we shouldn't give it a try.
What can we do that would be effective, do you think? A letter?
We'd have to put a lot of minds together from a lot of districts to try to figure that out, I think. But, you know, I mean, the first thing is, you know, just being armed with this information. I mean, this is the, I, I've, I check this frequently and tonight is the first night that I've seen this update in in a couple of years. So I'm, I'm very excited to see that. And I think as the word gets, continues to get out and districts see exactly the extent of it, nothing, nothing motivates you like cold, hard figures like that, so.
To that end, I wanted to say that me and my son attended a protest in Hoboken in front of the Pearson Building. The Pearson Company was awarded $83 million in a tax break from our state government to move from Upper Saddle River to Hoboken. Not creating one blessed job, but just moving from one county to the next.
Not one job?
Not one job. So protesting in front of the building is probably not, you know, a crazy thing to do at this point. I don't know, I don't know what there is to do, but I do want to, you know, say that any, any ideas that we have as a board, I am fully supportive of.
One thing I can suggest is write to the people on the state assembly and, what's the other one called?
The Senate Education Committee?
Yes. Write to the people on the education committees, because I've done that about chartered schools and, you know, they all wrote back. They keep sending letters. You know, you can go and protest down there. I think it's effective. I think the more that you bug people and send letters and gather groups together, like Darcy was saying, I think are really good ideas. I don't know that it works, but it's something to do.
It's something.
Something to do. Is there any other old business? Is there any new business?
I just wanted to recognize Mr. Shalala. And if you all didn't notice, he is on the, and congratulate him on being reappointed as the interim director of Educational Services for the next year.
Is there any other new business?
Is this the time to bring up all our petty complaints of the budget? Things that only count as 0.1% of the entire budget and therefore are trivial. We should...
No, old business was the time to do it.
Oh, that was old business? Thanks, Adam. That was a good one. I hate to be all negative, you know, because we've had sort of a nice collaboration the last couple of meetings. I love the idea of the $20,000 for the community outreach person. I, I think...
There's no person in it.
No, sorry. We've suggested that it could be a person, right? We have not, we've, we're talking about setting aside 20 grand and it could be filled by a consultant who would help us reach out to the community. It could, well, that's been discussed.
None of that, none of that.
No.
None of that.
The way that, the way that Israel was, I think, characterizing it was it was just gonna give him or, or whoever is the superintendent some funds to actually do...
Scope.
And so the interesting thing is, I'm sitting here tonight and I'm listening to people who are saying, you know, the community needs to do this and the community needs to do that.
And you said yourself, no solution.
Right. And, and this is a way, I mean, you know, those kinds of outreach efforts, they are not free. They don't happen in a vacuum. I mean, if we need to get people to the sports games, if we need to let people know what's going on in the district, these are, I mean, you know, yeah, it's true. In this budget, maybe, maybe this is a luxury we can't afford, but he was never talking about a person. He was talking about just...
Programs.
The programs, the kinds of things that, you know, that we would need to pay for in order to make our, you know, make things available to the wider community.
I see. I was confused by some of the emails that went around.
No, so it's not a person, it would never be a person. The board will have, the board will have full understand, oh, have a full decision in what that money is used for also. Just because it's in the budget doesn't mean that that's the decision. Your board will have to approve whatever contract, whatever decision.
Sure, I understand that. There was discussion of having a consultant come in. That was discussed.
Nothing was discussed in terms of what it, what it was. I sent around a, I sent around a proposal.
It wasn't discussed, right? It was presented. I'm sorry, it wasn't, there was no public meeting outside the FOKI.
So my, there, there was a lot of recognition tonight that we don't have a lot of answers.
Right.
That the community has, that may have a lot of those answers. We need to figure out and scope exactly what are the issues of our district. That, I don't believe, can be done by any person that we employ right now. And that, that needs to have some funding behind it to really give the new superintendent some, some clear guidelines of what are the issues in our district and where our community is asking us to act.
I mean, again, I'll respectfully disagree. I mean, last year, one of the positions that we started was called a family community coordinator. And the position was meant to improve the communication and coordination of school and outside services available to students and families. But to me, that sounds, that sounds like a bit of an, of an overlap and...
And so then this money can actually give her some tools to sort of broaden the spectrum of that.
I mean, again, this, these, when we're talking about a $20,000 outlay and then we're talking about, you know, well, they could, or maybe we could do that with it, or like, to me, I, I want to see a concrete plan of what, I mean, the one proposal, I'm sorry, Adam, that you, you emailed to the board, that wasn't something that I could support.
Okay.
I mean, we've had people, I've had community members approach us about, and other board members as well, I believe, about, you know, providing very similar services. You know, I think as a new superintendent comes in, there's gonna be a lot of time where that superintendent is spending the first few months getting to know the community. That's what the superintendent is gonna be doing, is meeting with different groups of, 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 you know, of our community. And then that, the superintendent would then report to us, I mean, in my ideal world, what they see that they're going to need. I think upfront loading those $20,000 right now, as we're talking about in this particular climate, is, is not a wise choice.
Okay. I disagree with that. And I think from a community, from a board, I think board members who have spoken about community outreach, finding $20,000 within this budget, which doesn't even represent a percentage point within the, the budget, is quite hypocritical, considering...
Adam, can we use a little bit less inflammatory language than that? I mean, that's...
We have plenty of ideas for community outreach that don't involve spending $20,000, respectfully.
So but none of this stuff, a community member who does this is not gonna come for free either. And you talked about this last week also, that things like that, things like this don't come for free. You talked about it when we talked about the technology thing. We need to put money behind things that are important to this budget. The, the community outreach that I think that this will do and that will, will be able to provide, will provide more than $20,000 in dividends for our district in terms of services.
Show us a breakdown of the expenses then, Adam.
I think you need to be able to prove that if you're gonna make the claim that we're gonna get more than $20,000 back.
Hypocritical, then you need to tell us what's gonna happen.
My assertion is that we have, that as you asserted also, that we have a lot of issues in this district, that this board does not necessarily know the exact solution to do that. I think if we crowdsourced those solutions from the community, which requires reports and requires compiling of information and meetings and so, and something like that, and things along those lines, that needs funding behind it and it needs to be an important priority for this district. So at this point...
I'm sorry. We haven't even gotten an update of what that position that we commu, that we created and funded last year has done.
There's no funding behind that position.
Well, she has a salary, right? She's a salary.
This is Julia's, I thought you were...
Oh, we're not. We shouldn't be talking about individual. I mean...
That position.
There's a position that's created, so yeah, that's funded. I mean, until we even know what has been done, what that position has endeavored to do, successes, failures, learn from that.
All right. At this point, I am not interested in taking out that money for this program. I think at the, at the, at the end, if the board decides not to use this, this money can get returned to the taxpayers. But at this point, I think the $20,000 is an important investment by the, by this, by this board.
I want to make clear that I think...
Okay.
Our community involvement is a great thing. And my comments, and I think many of our comments were not intended to say that we do not want to have community involvement and outreach. I think that's absolutely critical. But there are ways we can do it for less money, probably not as good ways. I agree with you that in an ideal world, we get a consultant who's awesome at this and that would be just fantastic. But I don't think in this environment, it's appropriate. I, I understand you feel differently.
No, that's fine. So... So, that's... All right, is there any other new business?
There's been a lot of, there's been some discussion about the $14,000 for Touchstones. Now, I, I have read a lot about Touchstones, I've looked at some of the research, I've spoken and emailed with some of the people who are working on it, it sounds like a fantastic program. Would, could we continue with the, we're still in the pilot, I understand, right? I mean, would it make sense to continue with the pilot next year, see how it goes, get a full report about how it's working? I mean, we've all heard good things about it, teachers like it, kids like it, but, you know, that's not enough to justify that expenditure. I mean, should we let it go on longer, get some, I don't want to say hard data after having criticized hard data, but some kind of data?
Well, last week, we met with most of the teachers that are involved with Touchstones. For the most part, the feedback was very positive, particularly for grades three and six. So we intend to expand the program for third grade and, and we're going to continue the program in sixth grade. The, the eighth grade was the one in question. You know, some of the teachers felt that the students weren't as enthused, that the texts weren't as engaging as they thought, and so we'll, we're going to reconsider the program for eighth grade. However, we did receive very positive feedback from third and sixth grade.
Okay, those are the two, it was third, sixth, and eighth that were in the pilot, correct?
Yes.
Right, okay. So we might be able to bring that number down a tiny bit. I know now we're talking about a couple thousand dollars, but perhaps we can bring it down a bit.
I'm sorry, but so what was the, what was the breakdown of the $14,000 for that?
That was, it was textbooks, professional development.
Textbooks for what grade levels? For expanding it at the current, at the three, six, and eight?
Right, right, for, for grades three, grades three, six, and, and eight.
Okay, so not, because it...
But we don't have to repurchase those books. I, I believe that the books are non-consumable, so we would just need to invest some additional funds for the rest of the third grade classes.
Okay, I'm so confused because the whole...
So I don't foresee investing $14,000, right?
We had $14,000 under the middle school as an increase for the Touchstone textbooks. So was that just for the eighth grade?
Right, so we were considering expanding for next year. We're not going to be expanding to other grades, we will be expanding within the grade for third and sixth.
Okay.
I, I don't, I don't believe that as this, as this juncture, it's going to require $14,000.
Right, and so when it was said $14,000, it was not just textbooks, it was also professional...
Professional development, yes.
All right. Is there any other new business?
I just want to add to the, just to discuss what was it, I mean, I'm not inclined right now to like yea or nay anything as a budget, as a whole, or any additional items on it.
Okay.
I mean, I feel that we do, we still have another month, there's still time for everybody, you know, to, to review it, to think about it, to go back to Mr. Soto for more questions or more suggestions. But I do think that he and Linda and, you know, the principals and ourselves have worked very hard to keep it as, as minimal as possible. I think we all do, you know, we all feel for the whole, for the taxpayers and the community on the whole. I mean, you know, my kids are fourth generation Highland Park too, I have, you know, elderly relatives here, not, let alone young families trying to start out with about the older families, so, but I do think we are very considerate and empathetic with that situation, and we just have to think about things, and we have time to.
Very well said, very well said. Is there any other new business? I'd like to move to public comment.
How about Friday in Michigan, still around 62 Grant Avenue? If you're empathetic, put your money where your mouth is. You're not going to find $50,000 here or there to cut, it's not there anymore, at least not that I can tell as an outsider. But you will find $1,000 in this lineup, $2,000 in that lineup, and that's how it adds up. That's how our taxes are going up this year so much, because you're spending $10,000 here and $20,000 there and so on and so forth. How about let's take the areas where you want to spend money and you don't have a plan and strike those first. Don't budget $20,000 for something if you do not have a coherent way to spend that money, because what you're doing is you're budgeting $20,000 of wasted money. All right, come up with a plan, make an argument for why the plan makes sense, then add it to the budget. So if you'd like to have a discussion 2016, 2017 for that budget about $20,000 to community outreach, when you have a plan for how to spend it, that might be appropriate. When you have no plan, adding $20,000 to budget with a 4.4% tax increase is irresponsible on so many levels.
My name is Liz Estes, and I'm at 311 North Fourth. So I'm here, I was, the first thing I wanted to tell you was, when you go on your trip, the first thing you need to see is Touchstones classrooms. And I didn't see them, I brought the program here, but I didn't see it in a, I've seen lots and lots of tapes, but I didn't see it until I went on Friday. We had visitors from Denmark who were researching, thinking about, they're recommending Touchstones to the government of Denmark because, as a way to circumvent social exclusion and to create inclusive classrooms. So this is a Touchstones discussion map.
You have to use the mic.
So this is a, a discussion map. So I saw a lot of these getting made, they were being made by teachers in Touchstones, everybody sits in a circle. The reason why I brought Touchstones here is for just the same reason that Adam is talking right now. Touchstones is absolutely targeted to the achievement gap. And I can, what we're trying to do with the achievement gap is, you know, everybody's really into these like Socratic classrooms, where in a Socratic classroom, you kind of turn things around and you, you ask questions and you get the students to do student-led inquiry. But we have a problem in Highland Park, and I have children who contribute to this problem, and that is that our dominant kids are the ones who are doing all the talking. And I have a child who's a Model UN competitor, and she doesn't like Touchstones, and she wouldn't come down for Touchstones training because she's been trained by our systems to suppress other people's thoughts and voices. And I'm, I'm a divinity student at Union Theological Seminary. This, this is a horrible thing, and we have to change it. And Touchstones is a 45-minute exercise where we put our faith in the people, in the classroom. And what they, what happens in that classroom is that at all these points around that circle, those kids become responsible. They become responsible to each other. There's no teacher is not, the teacher doesn't, isn't in charge. What happens in the Socratic classrooms, the teachers, to get everybody to talk, they'll give them a rule, they'll say, everybody can talk twice and bring a textual reference. But that doesn't work, the kids who are dominant fight it. The eighth graders are fighting Touchstones. They don't, they're, they have, our eighth grade kids are so dominant that they have terrified their teachers into pushing Touchstones away.
I used to be that kid.
Right, and you didn't get that training.
No.
And I didn't get that training. So I went to, I went to the college where this was invented. I went to a four-year seminar college, it was great books, and they taught me really well. And then they asked me to be a tutor, and I got really, really good at getting my thoughts across. And I am a big talker, and I do not know how to listen, and I don't know how to solicit input from other people. And that's why I'm also on the Human Relations Commission. And so we can't just do this with our kids, we need to do it ourselves. So I knew about Touchstones for 30 years, and I never thought we had to do something this dramatic here. But when I saw what happened to our, our community, when we acknowledged the achievement gap is a gap of color, and then how we fought about that, and how we did not know how to disagree with each other respectfully, I knew that it's a much more systemic problem. But what's great about this is that this is a solution, this was invented, this Touchstones, it was invented by teachers in this program. So they, they know that when you have the seminar, you are privileging the most dominant speakers and you're suppressing the shy people, the people who are on the outskirts. And they, this whole program is to stop that syndrome. And guess what, St. John's doesn't even like it. They do it on the outside, they're a nonprofit, and that's why it's here. Five million people have done it, 38 countries, they, it works in prisons, it gets people thinking, it gets people to rely on their own, their own thoughts, and each person becomes a valuable member of the class. And so when you go on this trip, I want you to go to two Touchstones classes. I want you to see a big one, and I want you to see a little one. And I want you to just see, I, it wasn't, I know Highland Park schools, not just because I have a 30-year-old kid and a 15-year-old killer, you know, Model UN kid, and a 10-and-a-half-year-old kid. I was a substitute teacher here for two months. I saw the most depressing classes, the gifted ones, and, and the, the, the extra help classes, right? It's depressing. And the attitudes are depressing, and the racial attitudes are awful because we've segregated the kids. If you go to a Touchstones classroom, you will see, I saw kids who were English as second language speakers, and they spoke in broken English and were respected by their colleagues.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tom Sclafani, I'm a teacher here at Highland Park, and I'm here, you know, I walked in, I have to wait for my daughter, she's in the play here. So I didn't realize the board meeting was going, and I happened to see it, figured I'd pop in. But I heard a couple of interesting things about trying to raise money for athletics, all right? So I'm going to invite the whole board, all right, to come on Tuesday night to our volleyball marathon, and I would like for you to pay the $3 admission fee if they go into athletics, all right? So if we could do that, that would be great. The money we're raising in the past, we started the volleyball marathon about five, six years ago, and the sign we have out front of the school was paid by volleyball funds that we raised over a few years. This year, what we're doing is we're trying to raise money for athletics, all right, because there is a need, okay? We're up at least $1,000 as of now, and hopefully it'll be a little bit more, but, you know, it, it goes to a really good cause, and we do need some extra money in athletics, that's a definite thing. But, you know, here's a thought, as I was listening to everybody, you know, maybe if we got somebody that could follow up on alumni, like, I, I happen to have Adam on my Facebook page, you know, we're on Facebook, and I have about 200 students that have graduated. I don't take anybody till they graduate. But when they graduate, I definitely like to keep in touch with everybody. And I think if we could try to figure out a way, and Adam, maybe you and I could think of something, I'd be happy to do it, is finding everybody's email addresses, all right, and being able to reach out and saying, hey, you know, we're trying to raise money for this in, be it athletics, be it whatever the school really needs.
Yep.
But we don't have that. You know, you, all your private schools, I used to work at a private school, we actually had a guy in charge of development, you know, and he got paid. But, you know, here, even like, I'd be happy to help on it if we can get a small committee and just try to get that, and I know you know a lot of people in town still that want school, and if we could get those email addresses, maybe that's a way we can publicize some of the things that are going on. Also, what if we were to send out every time there's a game?
Yep.
You know, we're talking about why are people not going? When I coached in college, I'm a former college basketball coach, when I coached in college, we, we did this to get more fans in. We would take, we adopted another team. So my girls' basketball team adopted the soccer team, and we went to three of their home games, and then they came to three of ours. And all our teams did that. Now, if we were adopting something like that and asked the parents of those kids in the comp, now you're going to have a lot of people. I was at a basketball game this year that I stopped at, it was a girls' game, and I'm not kidding, I could count the people on my hands, on how many people were in the stands. That's a shame, that should never be. You know, if we get into clinics, all right, this is for you, Israel, if we get into clinics and stuff that we could run in the school, all right, and now you give the kid who comes to the clinic a free ticket to the next basketball game, you give him one, but he has to come with an adult, so they can pay the $3 to get in, all right? But things like that, I think, you know, just help build momentum and get more people into the school. So again, I'd love for, if you guys can make Tuesday night, 6 to 9, we have the volleyball marathon, we'd love to have all the people in the community come, all right? It's a neat thing, we have, the police department comes down and plays with us and stuff, and we have Borough Hall comes down, it's a lot of fun.
It's in the high school gym?
This is in, yeah, it's in the high school gym.
I'm just disappointed you didn't ask me this year, I played, I think, a few, a few years ago.
You did play a few years ago.
Yeah, where's the invite for the...
You know, you know what the problem was this year?
I feel like this board could feel, yeah, I know.
Listen, I need one more team, so if you want to jump in, man, you're in.
I feel like this board could put together a mean team, I have to say, we're pretty feisty.
More than one day's notice.
You know what was hard this year? We had too many snow days, too many delayed openings and all those things, all right?
No, but I do want to say the, I think you hit a comment spot on. A, we should be getting everybody's email address as they graduate, that, my email address hasn't changed since fourth grade, I don't think many email addresses, you know, just changed. But we do need to create an alumni network.
Right.
I do know people who are at my, at the age or making a little bit more money and have some more, a little bit more extra money to donate to colleges.
How much you giving us for athletics?
What do you, you know, we can talk about, we can talk about it later, but, you know, we'll get, we'll get something coming your way. But seriously, we do need an alumni network, and I'd be happy to sit with you and...
Perfect.
And the community and communication people to really put something together, because Facebook is a great tool for that, but something much more institutionalized and that can be, can be, can provide the asks for community, for, for former alumni to provide money for a number of programs, so this district would be greatly beneficial.
That would be great.
Yeah.
The last thing I just want to also do, you know, you're talking about having the board come into the school, I think that would be fantastic, all right? I've had Jerry pop in once in a while, Adam's come in, you know, on the whim, he pops in here and there. You know, I, I think it's great, you guys should walk in at any time. I mean, I got the boss, he could come in my class anytime, right? He, he's been known to do stuff like that, all right? But those are the things, you see, you should be able to see what's going on in the school. And, you know, I'm listening to some things, and we're talking about diversity and all this stuff, there's definitely some problems in the school that I see, but I see a lot of good things also.
I do.
All right, so, I mean, I could talk for an hour on the good things, and I could talk a little bit on the bad things, but, you know, it's a fantastic school, I like it so much, I got my daughter, I live in East Brunswick, all right? And my daughter comes here to school, all right, because I see what goes on with things, and I think, you know, the faculty does a fantastic job, I've met some really good people with that. But thank you.
Yeah, we do charge his daughter, yeah, yeah.
Could you give us the details of the volleyball?
What was that?
Could you give us the details of the volleyball?
Sure, it's Tuesday night from 6 to 9, all right? And basically, it's a double elimination, so if you lose, you go on the loser's side, you still can win the whole thing, all right? But it's a fun night, it's all meant for fun, and you know what, sometimes it gets a little competitive. To me, it's all about trying to raise money for the school, that's the bottom line for me, all right?
Somebody's got to win.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sclafani.
My name is Laura Arp, and I live at 127 Harper Street. I have three children in the Highland Park school system, one in high school and two at Bardell. I'm here to speak on behalf and to ask you please not to cut any of the funding that's in the budget item for Touchstones program. Especially, I have a daughter this year who's in the pilot program in the third grade, and she absolutely loves it. Third grade and sixth grade, I hear they're going wonderfully, I know that too, because I've spoken to teachers, I've spoken to students in both classes. I've also spoken to students in the eighth grade classes. in the eighth grade classes. And I think, I think the eighth grade class is actually, it's vital to keep Touchstones in the eighth grade. For the entire year, eighth grade is that transition point where they're about to go into high school. And I invite you, when you go on your tour, to go sit in the high school cafeteria during the lunchtime. And, and sit at the table, imagine food being thrown on you. Imagine being the invisible kid in class. Imagine being the invisible kid in the, in an entire school, having to do exaggerated behaviors, wear exaggerated type of physical clothing, anything you might have to do to become exaggerated so that you will become visible in an environment where you're constantly invisible. Eighth grade, the isms start to happen, classism, sexism, racism. This is the point in time where children are going through puberty. They are developing into the adults that they are going to become. And to cut Touchstones at an eighth grade before they enter into high school really puts our whole society, I think, in jeopardy because, in our, our town, but we are not only pumping out, I mean, we taught, how much have we spent tonight talking about test scores and proving? Well, I want to see children come out and be able to be, be able to be contributing members to societies, healthy individuals, healthy self-esteem, know how to socially listen and speak, know how to listen respectfully, and know how to listen and agree to disrespect respectfully. That's what Touchstone speaks, that's what Touchstone is instilling in our children. Third grade, I think it'd be great to run it all through Bardell, so as our kids are running through the entire school system, they have this foundation at this young age before all this other stuff is coming in and bombarding them. Then you hit sixth grade, it's starting there. You hit eighth grade, it is heavy. You go into high school, and if you have not learned these skills, and if we are not responsible enough to teach our children these skills and allow our children to teach each other these skills, then we are putting our children, our whole generation, our town, our generation of kids to come in this town at a great disadvantage in the world. So I would strongly, just strongly encourage you, please do not cut the funding for Touchstones. It's coming up for any of the three grades. One investment, one textbook will last for the next 20 years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Melissa Newman, 215 Montgomery Street. I wanted to talk about what Michelle was talking about in terms of those pre-tests. Even as a parent, when I go on the Power School and I see the pre-test grade of an F on my student's report card, it's devastating to me as a parent. And it's like I have to take a step back and I have to remind myself, this isn't a real test. This is, you know, a pre-test thing, whatever. I think that, you know, I understand the purpose of pre-tests. They're very important to gauge, but there's also other ways that you can accomplish the same goal. I've seen, sometimes they do it in two columns, sometimes they do it in three columns. It's a piece of chart, and in one column, the student's supposed to list, what do I know about this topic? In the next column, they list what I don't know about this topic. And then the third column is what do I want to learn about this topic? So for example, say, the topic's about the American Revolution. You know, and the person, and everybody puts down, they know who George Washington is, and obviously the teacher doesn't really need to go into it. Maybe there's one kid that knows anything and everything about the artillery, about the American Revolution. So the teacher might invite that kid to be a teacher's helper or something on that day to share his knowledge. But then if you see in the third column, like, the kids, every student lists, you know, they want to know whatever, then the teacher knows, even though she wasn't planning to teach this topic, I will teach this part of this segment because that's what the students want to learn. And I think, you know, maybe trying to do a different way that acts more positive, you know, where instead of showing, this is what the kids don't know about this unit we're talking about, but more focused on this is what the kids already know about this topic. It will allow the teacher not to repeat what's learned, to let students show off what they do know already, you know, and really focus on what the kids need to learn and want to learn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shreece Richardson, 227 Benner Street. I sort of want to bridge these two points, where Laura was and then where Melissa just went to. The whole benchmarking process for a child who already struggles in school is very demoralizing. It breaks my heart, the whole beginning of this school year, having my children come home and tell me they were stupid. Literally, tell me that. Like actually come and say, "I'm stupid." And I'd say, "Well, what makes you feel that way?" "Well, I only got a three on the test. I don't know anything. I'm just stupid. I just can't do it." And then to have them say, "Well, well, what would, you know, how, why are you comparing yourself? Like who, well, so-and-so got a 20, and they're smart." "Well, why is that person smart? They're just smart. But why?" "Well, I don't know. All the white kids are smart. The Asian kids are smart. The other one told me that." These are third graders, and I can, all I can say is thank God for Touchstones. Because the same one who was telling me he was stupid all through the first half of the year, when Touchstones started in the third grade classroom, he regained his voice. And he would come home and be really excited and have conversations with me. His teacher told me there was a complete turnaround in how he performed in the classroom outside of Touchtones, of Touchstones, because he felt like he had a voice. He was smart. He could talk. My son has a visual processing disorder. It is difficult for him to deal with a lot of this technology. It is difficult for him because of his disability. Touchstones makes it possible for him to show how smart he really is, because it is verbal. He excels verbally. Even when they did his original testing, he was advanced proficient when asked the same questions verbally that he was being asked to write down on paper. Do not get rid of Touchstones. This helps our learner, our students who learn differently. And I'm hearing similar things from other people whose kids also were having the same experience in the classroom, from minority students, parents, that Touchstones gives them a chance to talk. Because they have to. They have to participate. And no one else can talk over them. And they're respected when they speak. So I really, you know, just, just take that into consideration. Talk with the teachers. Talk with the teachers. Talk with the third grade teachers about the turnaround in their classroom with some of their students who were doing really poorly and who are now very engaged, before considering cutting a $14,000 line item, which is helping to make a difference and make students feel like they can. We're only in the pilot year. We need to give this program a chance to change the culture of our school. Thank you.
Thank you.
So in awe of all of you, I have to say, at this late hour, I don't think, and I thought that I knew what being on a board was all about. I don't think any of our board meetings have ever gone this late.
I'm sorry. Would you mind stating your name and address?
Yeah, sorry, Rochelle Stern, 474 Lincoln Avenue. Okay, really quickly, first of all, Touchstone, whatever it is, sounds phenomenal. I'm going to Google that when I get home. But I'll just say this. I am not in any way suggesting that you cut any integral part of your budget whatsoever. God forbid for me or anyone to say that something that is helping this school, these schools get cut. Not at all. What I'm saying, and I think somebody else alluded to it, is to think out of the box. Let's really try and put our hearts together. I'm here, there's other community members I know who are more than willing to help in whatever capacity. That person who helped chair the finance committee, she had to leave before, but she just texted me saying, "Please give her name and number to whoever is in charge." I'll give it to you. Because she, it was unbelievable where she found areas that she was able to, things like the maintenance contracts, things that really did not affect the quality of education, and I Yoda, and that's so important. But more importantly, let's think about ways that we could perhaps fundraise as a community. I looked around, I don't see any signage. I've never actually seen signage. I've been in many of the buildings. I've never noticed that it says, you know, like the Stern Family Middle School or something. I just wonder if perhaps, and even when you mentioned the businesses on the avenue, I 100% get it. I know, in fact, I was thinking for a while of starting a business, so I know there's a lot of vacancies on Main Street. We all love Main Street. I think that maybe in a way to, obviously, we've been pushing it for a number of years, really, to try and get people to come bring their businesses here. But don't forget, you don't want to push away people who are shopping at those businesses. And a lot of the families that are shopping at those businesses on Main Street are families who are seeing their taxes go up, and they're not directly benefiting from them. I have many friends, like I said, who sent to either Art Per Y or to other Jewish schools in the area, or Catholic schools in the area, who are not seeing a dime of their tax dollars reflected in their children's education. And I have to tell you, it's just heartbreaking to see people not be able to afford just the basics of an education and being able to live in this community. This is a special community. People should be able to live here. So let's think out of the box. Perhaps we could do some fundraising. Perhaps we could go to some of the vendors that are on the avenue and ask them if they'd be willing to do naming rights. I mean, just think, Roberts Forests have been around for years. We've all gone, I go, my husband goes every week, he gets flowers. You know, you want to think about people like that who are, have directly impacted the community, are involved in the community. Perhaps they would love a naming right. So let's just think out of the box if we can and try to avoid raising the taxes at all costs. Thank you.
I think that's a good suggestion, and the board approved a advertising policy not too long ago, something we can definitely look at. Any other public comment? Seeing as there's no public comment, I would like a motion to adjourn.
Some moved.
All in favor? Thank you.